Township of Parsippany Troy Hills regular township council meeting, council agenda. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the open public meetings law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December the 21st, 2022, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the daily record and the Newark Star-Ledger on December the 28th, 2022. Would you please stand and join us in the flag salute, Councilman Neglia?
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Jolie, may we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Mr. Di Piero.
Here.
Mr. Musala.
Here.
Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Here.
We also have President Mayor Barberio, B.A. Cryin, and our township attorney, Mr. Lavery.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, December the 5th, 2023, at 7:00 P.M. is our agenda meeting. December the 19th, 2023, at 7:00 P.M. is our regular meeting.
Approval of minutes, the agenda meeting of October 3rd, 23, and a regular meeting of October 17th, 23. Motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Can I, who seconded?
I did.
Excuse me, council members. Ms. Jolie is not familiar with all of us here. If you would please state your name when you make a motion and second, please. Thank you.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Di Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Musala.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani. Yes. Presentations and reports, Mayor Barberio.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Well, before I get into the pilot, I just want to say that happy Thanksgiving to everybody. We have a Christmas tree lighting, and I'll have the dates up shortly, and a menorah lighting coming up. And tonight, you'll be voting on the PBA contract, and I'll just say this, I didn't negotiate the contract, Jamie Cryon, our B.A., did. But I should tell you, I think it's a very good contract for the township, fair, we had a real great negotiation, you guys got copies of it, and hopefully you vote in favor tonight. Now, when I walked in here today, I received this pilot fax, which is really a lot of misinformation. So as time goes on in this meeting tonight, I'm sure going to be talking about the pilot programs, but I'm going to be very candid tonight with regards to the township's position on pilots, because they have my name, this is the mayor's pilot programs, another mayor's pilot program to begin with. Developers come in and for a need of redevelopment, and we have to do something in the town, because if we don't do something in the town, it's going to affect your wallets. So anybody else who come up and question with regards to the pilots that we're going to be having, that we're doing, this whole entire council voted on the redevelopment plans. And when you vote on a redevelopment plan, it's a need of redevelopment, why? Because it's a blight area. Every council member voted in favor of those blight areas and the need of redevelopment, and was approved and sent back to the planning board, which the planning board also approved and sent back to the council for final approval. So every single council member here voted on that. So what you need to understand is that when you do the need of redevelopment, that triggers a pilot. And council members know that. It triggers a pilot program. I'll get into the pilot, the advantages of what the pilot program is to the township, and what it means for our future. Because our future's pretty bleak when it comes to office space here in Parsippany. We're at a 30% vacancy rate, and it's only going to get worse. So if we don't do, and we don't do things like this, we're not going to collect any tax money going forward. We have blight areas, we have dark buildings, and then here it says, these are A buildings. Well, Palmero Road is not an A building, I can tell you that much. And our tax assessor's here tonight, and we can discuss all that. But before I go on, because I don't know when to read this into the record, Council President, I guess when we get to the financial agreement for Six Sylvan, I can read what I wrote up, so I can have the public hear that.
Fine.
So you know, also, towns like Newton, Newton are in favor of doing pilot programs, towns like Belleville, and here's why. Our neighboring towns, Hanover Township, they're going to take, they're going to take all the businesses that would naturally come to Parsippany. But if we don't try to restructure what we have, we're going to be dark, we're going to be, and I'm telling you right now, at 30% vacancy rate, if you take 14 million square feet, I think it's 14 million 500 square feet, that's 4.2 million square feet of office space vacant. And what's that mean for the town? We're not going to be able to collect any money. What's going to happen, it's going to fall on the residents. That's just how it's going to happen. So I know you've got a lot of misinformation going around on Facebook, and that's why I love Facebook so much, because you can put anything on there, like Winston Churchill said, you can get a lie halfway around the earth where the truth can put its pants on. So I'm looking forward to the discussion tonight, I'm looking forward to the dialogue, and I'm looking forward to giving you the truth, because you're not getting the truth. You are not getting the truth. So thank you.
Township council, do we have any presentations or reports?
Street dedication for Lee Keimel and Charlie Beatty, what's the status?
Yeah, you're going to, it's going to happen. We will, we'll run over the signs today, we're going to try to get it in, obviously, December, obviously, to do it.
Hopefully before I leave.
Yeah, well, we'll make sure we get it before you leave.
Okay, thank you. Knock-in training, what's the status of that?
We are still coordinating with the Morris County Sheriff's Office.
And I suggest that you negotiate directly with the sheriff.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman.
Okay. I sent out an email to all the council members regarding Morris County Women's Republican Club tricky traders, you all get to see that?
Yes, we did.
I need an answer soon, yes or no on that, if you don't mind.
We'll do that.
Okay, the other two items I have a concern about, I noticed investigations and litigation's going on, but I have to make this statement without getting into particulars. The acting pro and the acting greenskeeper, they have both expressed concerns, they don't know if they have a job next year, in 2024. And what any of us would do in that situation is send out our resumes to protect our, to keep our income going. We're going to lose a greenskeeper and a pro that the golfers all like. And we're going to start the new golf season with nobody to run the outings and nobody to supervise maintaining the golf course. We're going to lose them if we don't say something to them. And my strong urge is, we do something, we promise something, soon, it's overdue.
Can I just make a statement, Council?
I don't want to go into particulars, but.
I do, I don't, I mean, no disrespect, this is a personnel matter that, you know, when it comes to hiring, it's not something we should really be discussing in the open public until, until the hiring or the promotions are made. That's all I'm saying, I understand your concern, but we can't really respond to something that's personnel.
I'm not asking you to respond, I just wanted to put on the record my concerns.
Thank you.
That's all, thank you. Township attorney, Mr. Lavery?
No report this evening, Madam Council President.
Business administrator, Mr. Cryin?
Thank you, Council President, I just wanted to real quickly talk about an item that's on the agenda, or a few items that are on the agenda. Most importantly, the PBA and SOA contracts that are up for your consideration tonight. This update was a long time coming, I see a lot of the members here want to thank you guys and thank your leadership for your professionalism, for your patience, and for frankly, your service. Dealing with you on this was tough, multiple, multiple meetings, we covered so many different issues, but it was fair and transparent the whole way. I knew I could trust your leadership, and your leadership hopefully knew that they can trust us. And that's really the most important thing you could do when you're dealing with the negotiation. It's a fair contract for the men and women, and a fair contract for the municipality and the future. Some of the highlights of it, Council President, or it's a four-year contract from January 1, 2022 to December 31st, 2025. I paused after 2022 to make sure that everybody realizes that this contract expired in January 1, 2020, or December 31st, 2021. So this is out of, out of contract, and these men and women were very patient and professional about it. The total salary increase is 9% over the life of the contract, over the four-year of life of the contract. There's additional two steps added. Longevity is ended for new employees hired after January 1, 2022. We, payments for sick leave are in accordance with applicable state law. Did a lot of dotting i's and crossing t's that made sure that the contracts were in compliance with state law and federal law and other rules and regulations that we must We are all better served when we can keep employees happy and retain employees and have the ability to bring employees on, because this is a great municipality. By paying a fair wage and giving fairness to those who do the most important job for us, is, is really, it's just, it's so necessary, and I'm grateful to have been part of this process. So thank you to the men and women of the PBA and SOA, I appreciate everything that you do for this town, and I appreciate everything that you've done in this, with this contract.
Thank you. Ms. Jolie?
Nothing to report at this time.
Township offices, committee reports?
I have a committee report.
Please.
Had a library committee meeting last night, and actually, some good news came out of it. The library director mentioned that she was going to have a meeting with the state librarian to discuss the existing grant that, that's been sitting there for a few years. Apparently, some type of resolution has recently been passed, and the state librarian can now change the specs, which would give our library in Lake Hiawatha the opportunity to utilize the grant money with the matching funds to either renovate the existing building in Lake Hiawatha, or possibly get another grant to build the new building, which they spoke about last night. I thought that was some good news.
Yes.
In addition to that, they did ask when the funding for the Mount Tabor Library was going to be released.
Is that released?
That's what they had asked.
Oh, CFO.
That's my report.
Thank you very much. Engineering report, Councilman Karifi, please.
2021 road resurfacing curb and sidewalk program, the annual road resurfacing curb and sidewalk project is on hold pending negotiations with the contractor, no council action required. Rockaway River flood wall levy inspection, our consultant is working on preparing design details and a cost estimate for the maintenance and repair work on the flood wall and levy. Recent site inspections were made to the aid and design of the repairs. Once the design and necessary permitting is complete, the project will be advertised for bid, no council action required. North Beverick Road streetscape project, phase one, the first phase of North Beverick's road streetscape was awarded. Once contracts and other paperwork is executed, pre-construction meeting will be scheduled and a construction schedule provided, no council action required. 2023 road resurfacing curb and sidewalk program, the annual road resurfacing curb and sidewalk project is substantially complete. Minor punch list items will be finished in the next several weeks, and all work will be completed by the end of the month, no council action required. Mount Tabor street improvements, phase seven, construction on the Mount Tabor street improvements, phase seven project is substantially complete. Minor punch list items will be finished in the next several weeks, and all work will be completed by the end of the month, no council action required. Drummond Drive stream cleaning, the NJDEP permits have been issued for the project, our consultant is finishing the design, and we intend to build the project later this year, no council action required. Putting Stone Heights Road Improvement Project, phase two, second phase of Putting Stone Heights Road Improvement Project is in design. We anticipated bidding the project later this year, no council action required. Jefferson Road Improvements, the NJDEP permits and construction plans for the Jefferson Road Projects are in design, permit applications plan will be sent to the NJDEP later this year, the project will be bid once NJDEP permits have been issued, no council action required. Lake Intervell Area Street Improvements, the first phase of Lake Intervell Area Street Improvements Project is in design. We anticipate bidding this project later this year or early in 2024, no council action required. Silverway Culvert Improvements, we are working with our design professionals on preparation of plans and the NJDEP permit application, we anticipate bidding this project in early 2024, no council action required. Edward Roads Improvements, phase two, the second phase of the Edward's Road Improvement Project between Route 4 to 6, a new road is in design, we anticipate bidding this project early in 2024, no council action required. North Beverick Road Streetscape Project, phase two, the second phase of the North Beverick Road Streetscape is in design, we anticipate bidding this project in May 2024, no council action required. No parking zone, Littleton Road, this office has received a request to investigate implementing no parking zones on Littleton Road to prohibit vehicles from parking along the edge of Littleton Road from 287 overpass to Parsippany Boulevard. The police department and this office investigated this request and determined that parking should be prohibited on both sides of the street at all times. Amendment to Chapter 405, Section 14 is required, an ordinance has been prepared and would need to be adopted by the council. Stop signs, Mountain Way and Meadow Bluff Road, stop signs were requested at this intersection of Mountain Way and Meadow Bluff Road due to safety concerns. Investigation was conducted by the office and the police department, and it is recommended that stop signs be installed at the corners of Mountain Way and Meadow Bluff Road. Amendments to Chapter 405, Section 23 are required, an ordinance has been prepared and would need to be adopted by the council. No passing zone, Mountain Way, Meadow Bluff Road, this office has received a request to investigate placing no passing zones on Mountain Way and Meadow Bluff Road. Mountain Way and Meadow Bluff Road have posted speeds of 25 miles per hour and are both very wide roadways. Vehicles traveling at the posted speed limit are frequently passed by faster vehicles creating unsafe condition in the residential neighborhoods. The police department, along with this office, investigated the request and has determined that no passing zones are warranted. Amendments to Chapter 405, Section 34 are required, an ordinance has been prepared and would need to be adopted by the council. Roadway design projects, the following projects are in design and proposals have been requested. Mount Tabor Street Improvements, phase eight, Troy Brook Stream Cleaning, Silverway Sidewalk Improvements, River and Stream Desnagging Plans and Permits, Eton Road Traffic Study, no council action required.
Thank you. There's no correspondence, bids, there's none taken, none to be taken, and there are no quotations, proposals, or qualifications. At this time, before we have the open session, I'd like to have Mr. Casse come before us, he is our township tax assessor.
Do you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I want to thank everybody for coming here tonight, I want to put together a little presentation, I'm going to be as fast as I could of a very complicated issue. I want to make an opening statement, clear the air about a couple of things. I'm sure that everybody has been informed that I wrote two articles regarding pilots. I wrote the first article in 2019, which was pre-COVID. The second article I wrote is February of 2021. What we have now, November 21st, 2023, it's a completely different market, and I will explain that market to you in a few minutes. I'm still not a big fan of pilot agreements. I have been trained to put ratables for the last 50 years, 50 years, 1974. On the tax list, and not take them off the market. But municipalities throughout, throughout New Jersey are considering and approving pilot agreements in a way to redevelop these distressed sites. As an example, in Markville Township, there were over 1,000 apartments under construction right now that have pilot agreements. They won't build them, they had to meet court order demands for coal units, so they had to give a pilot agreement, they're too expensive to build. Morris Plains, Hanover Township, have similar pilot agreements. That's my opening statement. But I gave the councilmen and newspaper reporters.
Dan, you got to keep talking into the mic.
When I gave the councilmen and newspaper reporters with a, a presentation, I'm going to briefly report it. Part of my job as tax assessor and mayor's economic advisor is to keep the mayor, business administrator, and CFO appraised of any changes in the market. I periodically send them real estate articles, and I prepare illustrations at their request. Attached to this article, I have a map of McCallie Office Mark, which goes on to show that nine buildings are vacant. Four years ago, Parsippany had 14, oh, I evaluate market conditions, that's what I do. When I read articles, I report them and let you know what's going on in the market the best I could. Four years ago, Parsippany had 14.5 million square feet of office area, 4.5 million square feet of warehouse area, 2.5 million square feet of retail space. That's over 20 million square feet of commercial space, of which I personally oversee. Today, there are 12 million, 12.5 million square feet of office space, because almost 2 million square feet has been demolished or scheduled for demolition or redevelopment. The office market is changing, and it's not changing for the good of Parsippany office market. As of today, there are nine office buildings having a total square footage of 1.2 million square feet that are vacant or have been demolished for redevelopment, and McCallie Business Campus area alone, map attached. In addition, the following office buildings are vacant, 11 Waterview Boulevard, 15 Waterview Boulevard, 100 Kimball Drive, someone mentioned A Building, that's an A building, 200 Kimball Drive, that's an A building, vacant, 30 Landex Plaza, Six Sylvan Way, 169 Lockland Avenue, which you guys, with the councilmen, are going to be voting on a settlement that I did with this property. It was a very good settlement, I'm a very aggressive tax assessor, the attorney for this case said, "I can't wait till you retire." That's a quote. That's a 256,000 square foot office building that was built for the sole purpose of New York Life Insurance. They vacated the building, they converted it to a multi-tenant building in an effort to attract tenants, because there's no big market for single-tenant buildings. Well, it's on the market right now to be demolished for 110,000 square foot warehouse. You could ride by, 169 Lockland Avenue, you're going to be shocked. So looking ahead, the following single-tenant office buildings leases are due to expire. One Jefferson Road, occupied by Dave Pitney, expires on August 31st, 2025. I would be surprised if they renew. 45 Waterview Boulevard, occupied by DSM, expires on September 1st, 2027. The combined square footage of these properties that I just mentioned are one, about 1.2 million square feet. So now, 1.2 million square feet of the McCallie Office area, plus these standalone buildings, we're going to 2.5 million square foot of single-tenant buildings. I mean, ADP 15 Waterview, they walked away from it. Right after COVID, they literally sold it for, I think, $60 a square foot, and combined their office at, on Jefferson Road. So we're in a little bit of a problem here. We read or hear about it every day, professionals in the industry are predicting a catastrophic loss of market value of office buildings due to rising interest rates. I mean, this is important. Therefore, with interest rates and construction costs rising, pilot agreements may be necessary for redevelopment of certain sites to proceed. That's a statement I'm standing by. But I did, again, I put in there, a newspaper article put out by Bloomberg, dated June 22nd, 2023, US office owners get dire warning, rebound unlikely to 2024, 2040. So if you don't do anything now, the experts, I'm not an expert on the market, I'm an expert on Parsippany. You're going to, you're talking 16 years, 17 years of dark buildings. I mean, you can't have Parsippany sit around with, by the way, the total number of office buildings that are vacant are 17 office buildings right now. These multi-tenant buildings are becoming less and less attractive. You're going to find more office buildings vacant, if you don't start being aggressive and try to get these things redeveloped, we could be in a problem. We could not be in a problem where it's going to be, who wants to come to Parsippany? There's 25 office buildings vacant.
Dan, you mentioned interest rates as one reason, but cost of building materials and the cost to build have gone way up, too, this pandemic.
I might have spoke too fair, sometimes I do that. Interest rates and construction costs are rising, so pilot agreements may be necessary.
And I didn't even read your article.
Now, that is the, that is, that's the gloom outlook. I also attached an article that I wrote, it's called "The Changing Face of Parsippany Troy Hills Commercial Market," dated October 1st, 2023. I mean, the highlight of it is, in the next four years, once completed, well, I'll read the first paragraph, which doesn't want to take all your time. There was a change going on at Parsippany Troy Hills Commercial Market. The administration has been reactive to the existing office market conditions by adapting and allowing changes in use of existing sites. The planning board and Board of Adjustment have been approving applications by developers to change the use of these properties that now have office buildings, or sites that had approvals for office buildings. These approvals have removed over 2 million square feet of vacant or partially occupied office space from the market. These applications include requesting to demolish existing office buildings to replace them with warehouses, adult care facilities, apartments. There's even one application that converted an existing office building into a boutique hotel. So I could go on, it goes on to state the different sites, I don't know if you want me to do that?
No, I don't think so.
Cut to the chase. So that's basically my article. Westfield, there's an article on June 26th that was in the New Jersey Magazine, which I hope, Real Estate New Jersey Magazine, I hope this article I could get into, somebody has to sponsor it. But Westfield currently did a complete renovation of the center of town, everybody was against it. It included residential development, it included retail, townhomes, under a pilot agreement, a $400 million mixed-use development. You know, they went forward with it, even though the people were, a lot of the people were against it, because they, they knew, and I read the article, I don't know the town, but it looks to me it's a great deal. It's a major development coming into the town, it's going to bring more people to the town. Having 17 vacant office buildings is clearly not going to be good for Parsippany. But the good news is, there's a lot of good things going forward. Parsippany was a good place to live, still is a good place to live, it's going to be a good place to live. You got $1 billion of ratables coming online, $1 billion of market value coming online. That's going to be a good thing.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Casse? Yes. So basically what you just said, so if these 17 office buildings remained vacant, we don't do anything. For instance, we have one that has a potential, if the owner gets a pilot, they would build a warehouse there. Right now, that building is decrepit, it's vacant, we're bringing in hardly any money in tax revenue, right? From that.
Bringing, pre-COVID, one-third of the money.
Okay. So now.
Not to scare anybody, sorry. The list of properties that I just gave you, there's only one pending appeal, I settled them all. I'm a very aggressive tax assessor, I'm a proactive assessor, I don't let them wait too long if I could, unless the owner's not responsive, not responsive. Only 30 Landex Plazas are pending tax appeal, which will be settled by the end of the year. So there's nothing dangerous from these cases going forward, they're just, they're blighted, you just got to do something about it.
Right, they're blighted. So, right now, without that money coming in, that means the residents have to make up the difference.
I have been lowering the assessments on this property, yes.
Right.
So the shift is going.
So if we don't do anything, it's going to go this way, and now the residents are going to have to pay more. So, for instance, the Pomeroy location, where there's a potential for a pilot, they want to put a warehouse in there. The revenue that we would bring in for that compared to what we're bringing in now, huge difference?
You know, I didn't do that study, because I didn't really, I didn't.
But I mean, just, you're professional, I don't need the exact number.
I'll tell you what it is, if anything, it's going to be comparable, it's going to be, it's a good, it's a good deal, because no one's ever going to take that big industrial building unless you knock it down.
Right.
And cost are prohibitive and let them build it by the.
Right, so we can potentially get this warehouse, or we could have a developer come in and say, hey, I'm going to put in more apartments, because you're going to need another round of apartments, right?
This is true.
Which, we've had people coming up and saying, oh, more schoolchildren, this and that. So this is a way of, no more schoolchildren at that location. Instead of 500, 600 apartments being built, we'd have a warehouse there, where it increases our revenues for the town, helps our residents, because now that starts balancing it out, versus bringing in more schoolchildren, putting a burden on our tax, on our schools, and so forth. Correct? Right.
Mr. Casse, I'd like to ask some questions. We've went down, as you stayed here, about 2 million of square feet of, of office space is scheduled to be demolished for redevelopment. But is it fair to say most of that are not the result of a pilot?
We only have two pilots in town.
Correct.
One is, oh, wait.
15, 15, around 10.
They got approvals for development. They got approvals for development. I don't see any shovels on the ground. I don't see any buildings being demolished. They're still standing.
Well, what I...
Whether or not, whether or not that's going to be needed is going to be on a one-on-one basis going forward. And a financial consultant will better advise whether or not you should go forward with that. I'm just a tax assessor. I don't do pilots.
Okay. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about your article that you did write. You brought it up. You wrote an article in June thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, titled "Pilot for Pyramid," correct?
That is correct.
Can you please explain why you chose that word "pyramid"?
The whole purpose of the article, which is interesting, you're going to like this because it has nothing to do with what is being said out there. When a pilot is granted, the property value increases because the taxes are lower. So, what happens is, is that the owners are going to be able to borrow more money from banks. So, the whole purpose is to show that the banks are going to be taking more of a burden, more of a responsibility on these markets. For instance, well, they're going to be taking more of a hit should the market fall out.
Okay.
And I'm under the, I'm under the possibility that somewhere down the line, there's going to be an apartment bubble. Everybody else is telling me no, the world is telling me no, but I'm just, you just ride around and you see vacant, you see apartment buildings under construction. What's the first thing out of your mouth? Who's going to live there?
Sure.
So, that was the purpose of that article, not, not for the purposes that's being used.
But when you, you wrote that article on pilots, you predicted that the market on apartment buildings would collapse. So, do you stand by that prediction?
My, my position is that I think that due to the glut of apartments that are being built, there's a possibility that might collapse.
Mm-hmm, okay. So, that, now, that you said that when the market for apartment rentals would collapse, it will be the taxpayer who is left to pay the outstanding balance that the pilot creates in the local tax rate. Do you stand by that statement?
That would be, that would be the same thing. Do you like the conversation?
I'd like an answer, sure.
So, you're going to give me a chance to answer. You okay? Because if not, we don't have to have the discussion. So, ask your question again.
I said, "Do you stand by that statement that it will be the taxpayer who is left to pay the outstanding, outstanding balance that the pilot creates in the local tax rate?"
Interesting. What happens where the pilot is, is that there is a minimum amount that they have to pay. And that is if the vacancy goes to fifty percent, they still have to pay a minimum amount, whatever that is in a financial agreement. And should that minimum amount not be met, it'd be treated the same way as if it was a ratable. If they can't pay the taxes, then you do a foreclosure on it. So, that's what would happen.
Okay.
I mean, I don't exactly, I think they have to, once they not make the payment, I guess there would be money borrowed on that property, so the bank would do a foreclosure on it. So, would there be loss of ratables? Somewhere down the line, when it's put back on the tax list because it's going to lose its pilot due to non-payment, whatever the assessor puts that number on, then there may be loss of rate. But there is no loss of ratables if the pilot collapses, and there is a minimum amount too.
Now, one of the art, one of the pieces in your article, I know we were a little giddy about a warehouse, but two of the pilots are intended for apartment buildings. One for Avalon Bay totaling four hundred and ten units and then an apartment building at Sylvan Way, two hundred and thirty-eight, that totals two hundred and thirty-eight units. And in this article, you had said about pilots that include a residential component, "The school portion of the tax rate will ultimately need to be increased in order to cover the loss of the ratable the new development is replacing and to pay for the additional children that will be attending school as a result of that development." Is that an accurate statement?
There'll be no, there'll be no taxes going to the schools from a pilot development on the building. But I have, Jamie and myself, I've talked about this, Jamie and the mayor, both Jamies. We want to make sure that the land is being taxed because that portion is separated, it goes to the schools and everyone else. The Stanbury Development, that is not the case. The UPS Development, that is the case. So, they will be getting money from the site, yes.
Okay, but do we have any idea as to how many school-aged children will come from these apartment buildings?
You know what? I spoke to Robert Tedesco because she had concerns. She sent me an email to ask me some questions. And I asked her, I said, "Did they do an actuary study to see how many ki... I don't know how many kids are going to come from these developments." I could tell you, like, for instance, Park, the development on Cherry Hill Road and Stanbury have a lot of studios in them and one-bedgers. There aren't as many two-bedgers as you would think. I think the other ones have a little bit more one-bedgers than two-bedgers. There aren't those studios. So, how many kids are...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but to be specific, for, to specifically answer these questions, there will be a financial analyst at the next meeting when these are up for a vote.
Yeah, because I'm not, I don't, I don't do that. I'm a tax assessor. I value properties. I'm here to show you what the market is about. You guys decide whether or not they're needed, not me. The financial advisor will tell you if they're needed.
I guess then, and I appreciate that from our business administrator then, how do you explain Chick-fil-A taking down office buildings coming here, Topgolf taking down office buildings here, all without a pilot in the same market that we're in right now, but now there's a certain need to suddenly give pilots to all of these other people that are requesting them?
Those are, those are market-generated decisions. Each individual developer, it's their decision to see if they could go forward without it. Topgolf, Chick-fil-A is a retail business. They're going to, they know what the market's going to bring in, and they think that these sites, they're going to make a lot of money. If according to Topgolf, it's going to be their number-one site, so they don't need a pilot. By the way, they do have a pilot in Mount Laurel. They don't have a pilot in Edison.
So, we're seeing...
I did look into, because I, before I tried to estimate what the taxes are, I see what the assessments are of the surrounding towns. But Mount Laurel isn't, Mount Laurel does have a pilot on Topgolf, Mount Laurel, New Jersey.
And in your professional opinion, how many of these projects would go far, go forward without a pilot?
You're going to have to do that on a one-on-one basis. You make it to the developer that, by having the money, I could do it. It's really on a one-on-one basis.
Are you aware of any criteria that we're using on a one-on-one basis to determine why we're giving out pilots?
My suggestion is to ask the financial consultant that.
He comes.
Not a builder. I'm a tax assessor.
Sure.
I value properties.
Thank you, Mr. Casse. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Mr. Casse, you mentioned that the Board of Ed, schools get the land taxes on pilots, correct?
That is correct.
Is that also...
The pilots that we're going through now, we've talked about it. Look, I'm going to say, in Montpel, and I know I looked into Montpel because I got a copy of their pilot agreements. I'm sorry, I apologize. In Montpel, those thousand apartments that are under construction right now, the land is exempt.
The land's exempt.
The land is exempt. The schools are going to get nothing from those sites.
In our case, that's not the case. Now, my question...
We made it very clear when we have...
Basically, that'll happen through negotiations.
I'm sorry?
That will happen through negotiations because I have questions to ask the Board of Education as well.
Good.
But that's for another time.
But land taxes, even on warehouses, go to the school, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
But isn't, isn't it fair to say, though, a majority of the taxes that go to the school come from the improvement to the land and not just the land tax itself?
That is correct.
And it's also pilots also exempt the improvements to the land where a majority of the revenue is provided for the developer, correct?
Mr. Casse, are you able to answer that question if not?
I think the value of the property, it's going to be, the land is going to be assessed, and you want to know what the difference of the assessments going, the taxes are going to be once it's built versus once it's not?
Yeah, I'm asking that because the financials that we've been provided show two drastically different scenarios in projected ad valorem. Have you reviewed the financials or no?
No.
Okay.
But that's what the financial consultant will do.
Right.
And that's on December fifth.
I said, I set values. I could tell you what the value would be if it wasn't a pilot, not right now, but I could project it.
So, just so we're, we're clear, there is a portion that does not pay taxes to the school, and that is the improvement.
That is correct.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mr. Casse.
One, one more question.
Yes, please.
If these go blight, nobody gets any tax money, am I correct? Except for whatever it's assessed as they go from tax appeal and most likely wouldn't be a tax appeal.
There will be taxes collected, but if you keep allowing these buildings... Me presenting this tonight was not a good idea, but I had to do it to show you how bad the market is. Of course, when I go to, when I go to meetings with tax attorneys representing taxpayers against the township, I'm committed to tell them a little bit of a different story. But I had to make this public because you asked me to come here.
And we already, we...
The answer to your question, Mayor, if you keep these buildings blighted long enough, they're going to keep filing tax appeals. The values are going to go down. I'm going to have to keep lowering the assessments. It's going to be a down, down spiral. It's not just going to get worse.
And, and as the studies show, we're not going to see any recovery in the market for commercial till 2035.
Twenty forty.
By twenty forty. So, if we're not going to be proactive and we don't do pilot programs, and I'll say it again, taxes are going to skyrocket on the residential portion.
They will, they will. There will be a shift. The other thing, I mean, I gave you so many articles, and I didn't see one positive article about, about office. I mean, New York City is probably seventy percent vacant in office. B and C buildings are projected to be obsolete by twenty thirty. Is A the best? B, C? B and C buildings, the articles that I'm reading, are going to be obsolete by twenty thirty. You have to, my advice to councilpeople is if you're not proactive, if you don't stay competitive with the surrounding municipalities, you're going, you got to have a thought.
Thank you.
I guess my, my last, my last question would be, we have two, two pilot programs right now in place in Precipity, but since they have passed, why is it that nobody's taxes have gone down? And government spending here at the local level has not been reduced. So, I understand that some of us are saying if we don't pass pilots, taxes are going to go up, but if pilots were a mechanism to keep taxes stable, then wouldn't we have a tax rate that's decreasing?
Because he just said we have seventeen vacant... We have seventeen vacant...
I understand, but I asked the witness. I didn't ask you.
That's very easy. We have seventeen vacant buildings. We're not bringing in revenue.
I asked the, I asked the witness the question.
Hey, how's it feel like paying the witness?
It's a basic answer.
I know.
He can answer because it's so easy.
Okay. But I mean, how, how else do you want me to answer this? I mean, if you don't do something now, you're going to pay later. That's the answer I have for you.
Thank you.
Now, if your developers won't develop in this town, if they say they need a pilot, you got to consult, you got to ask the financial consultant on why it's needed.
Thank you, Mr. Casse. Thank you.
So, Dan, in, in summary, just, just so I can understand this. Right now, we have two million square feet that are, that are vacant, and they're filing tax appeals on their taxes. Now, we have two options, and we've been doing. One is change the zoning on properties to overlay network, which means we, we rezone them for not what they're intended for now, what the zone allows them to build now. We allow some other things to be built there too, to provide more flexibility for someone to build there, the overlay network. And then the other thing is the incentive, since the economic is not to build now, the interest rates are high, the cost of building materials is high, is offer pilots to offset that and encourage them to build now.
You got to encourage the developers to come to Precipity. If not, they're going to go to other towns. The other thing, you're voting on a case, you're voting on a tax appeal right now, tonight, where I had to refund a hundred and one thousand dollars. One Sixty Nine Lockawana Avenue. It is a twenty-five percent occupied building that is being advertised for industrial building right now. This is going to, this is going to happen again and again. And even the buildings that I sell, they're going to come back in for more refunds.
So, the only, the only options we have is rezone the property by using overlay networks or incentivizing someone to build by using the pilot. Those are the only two options we have.
You could do nothing.
We could do nothing and let them rot.
That's not a good idea.
And, and just to make one thing clear so the public knows, that when you do these need a redevelopments, every council member up here knows you're triggering a pilot program. Because that's the only way you can get a pilot program, is you do the need a redevelopment. When you have a blight study done, that, because if you, if you don't have that done, then the developer cannot ask for a pilot program. So, my point I'm trying to make is every council member up here knew that.
Thank you, Mr. Casse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was mentioned, it was brought up, and last week, or our last council meeting, we had a presentation by the developer's attorney for Two and Three Campus. Two and Three Campus are part of our affordable housing plan. So, those are going to be apartments. The owner of that property is seeking a pilot. The owner of that property has also said that Seven Campus will be a industrial building, no apartments, no skill, uh, schoolchildren. If they do not get the pilot, that will change everything. And Seven Campus Drive, which is in the same location, Carlos, you know where that is, the developer now will then go, when the next round of affordable housing comes along, and say, "Hey, I want to build another apartment building at Seven Campus." Right now, we'd be avoiding that. So, for anyone here that is saying, "Oh, these apartment buildings are going to be creating more schoolchildren," that's already part of our affordable housing plan. But now, if this developer has already said, if he doesn't get the pilot, Seven Campus is going to be up for another, they're going to put in for another apartment building there. Right now, we're avoiding that, and we're also adding to our revenue. We're bringing in revenue. So, Two and Three are already part of the plan. They're, they're already building apartments there, regardless of they get the, the pilot or not.
Under our affordable housing...
Under the affordable housing plan. But this developer has said that they will build industrial, no apartments, no schoolchildren at Seven Campus, and will also increase our revenues. So, just keep that in mind for anyone that's coming up here saying, "Oh, this is going to add schoolchildren." Two and Three are already on the plan. That, that's, that's done. That's already on the plan. We're avoiding Seven Campus being built. We're taking up that area, okay? So, just want people to know that.
And, and Councilman Kufi makes a good point, and he was on the council at the time when the Waterview Plaza, the Whole Foods came up. While the overlay zone failed, and what did they do? They put a one hundred percent affordable housing application in. And when that happens, you can't stop it. It's inherently beneficial use, and there's nothing you can do. The courts grant that to these developers because it's a one hundred percent affordable housing unit. Well, we negotiated with that developer to try to avoid that, and we did. We got the Whole Foods, you got the, you got a retail stores, and now you have a positive revenue source coming in, which is like almost a million dollars a year to the township. We negotiated that. We understand the situation, a million dollars, almost a million dollars. Guess what we were getting on that before the negotiation? We were getting twenty-eight dollars from my, I recollect because it was farmland assessed. But they came in, and let me tell you something. If you think the developers won't come in with a hundred percent affordable housing, there's nothing the Board of Education can do, there's nothing the township can do. We cannot stop it because we lose our immunity if we try. And once we lose our immunity, they can build whatever they want. So, my point is, stop, and I don't mean this in any disrespectful way. A lot of propaganda is going out there. These are the facts we're giving you tonight. And there's more that are going to come as this meeting goes on.
I just can't be the only one that finds it strange. A developer threatens us, and then we just say, "We'll give you a taxpayer subsidy in exchange for, for backing off." I, I think we need to play hardball as other towns have done. Neighboring Booton had a similar situation where Avalon Bay tried to get a pilot in twenty twenty, and they threatened the same thing with them. The council there rightly said no, and they still built the Avalon Bay without the affordable housing. So, I just don't think it's right for us to get into business with people that want to threaten to develop the town and push things down our throats on the back of the taxpayers. I just find that inherently wrong.
Okay, because you don't negotiate with them, that's why. I do negotiate with them. And it, and it's funny because we had the same situation in, in twenty thirteen. Everybody clapped. And then all of a sudden, when they came with a hundred percent affordable housing, all of that level clapping were asking me, "How can we stop it?" And it was very difficult to stop it. It was truly very difficult.
But the developers-
Sitting in, so, I'm, I'm speaking.
You're right, you're-
Um, it's very difficult. You can sit on the end there and over there, councilmen, and say all these things and put out propaganda, all that kind of stuff. I'm just telling you the facts. If you don't want to do a pilot program, you can vote no. It's that simple. There's five of you up here. You can vote no tonight, you can vote no on December 5th. Feel free to vote no. If that's how you feel, I respect that. But when, when, and it will happen, when this town starts to go dry, because he mentioned Booton, but he did not mention East Hanover. He did not mention Hanover Township. He did not mention Morris Town, who were doing pilot programs. So what does that do to us? It takes those companies away from us. Because they're not going to come to Parsippany if they can't get a pilot program from all those neighboring towns. That's what's going to happen. Now, I will tell you this, Belleville put a really good thing out on their web, on their website, and explained why they have to do pilot programs. Um, I got this from Newton, the township of Newton. Why, why is it positive to have a, a, um, nobody wants a pilot program, not even I do. But guess what? If we don't do something, you're going to have blight. I'm telling you, I toured those buildings. I went inside 7 Silvan, 6 Silvan. I went inside those buildings, I looked at them. They're dilapidated. I went to 30 Lanedex, dilapidated. They're, they're not, nothing's going to happen to them unless you have someone that can come in and do the job, get us some sort of ratables, and that's what this is going to do.
I think, when I've spoken to commercial real estate investors that, that I know, um, you know, number one, it's their properties. So if they're losing money on these properties, that's on them. Eventually, they will have to do something that doesn't involve the taxpayers subsidizing their development. Number two is when it comes to this whole affordable housing scare tactic that people like to use, no developers will go forward with a 100% affordable building because it won't make any money.
Sure. Well, well, they did, they did, sorry. And you're wrong. And first of all, you talked to commercial realtors, I do too.
I know, let me just finish-
And they actually told me the industrial market's in a tank. And guess what?
Let me just finish-
That's the biggest part of our, our, our recovery.
Let me just finish what I was going to say. Um, but, but number three, we have already had, have had high-profile tenants coming to Parsippany without the use of pilots. They're already doing it. So the market is in recovery, repurposing these aging office buildings. And these commercial real estate investors that own these large 100,000 square foot buildings are not stupid people. They're going to do something. They might have to sell them at a loss. Okay, so be it. But eventually, they will be repurposed, and I think that's what we need to explore, is more of how the market will drive that and not us subsidize-
I have to, I have to respond to that, because, um, there is no recovery. You just talked about, and whoever real estate agent told you there's a recovery, maybe shouldn't have a license, because there is no recovery. I've spoken to several real estate agents, not just several of them. I had one come to our Economic Development Committee. You know what they told me? Oh, there's no, there's no room for industrial. No industrial is going to happen here in Parsippany. You're not going to see any warehousing. Why? Because I'm a commercial realtor, I understand how it works. Guess what the majority of that's coming in? I said industrial, industrial's coming in. We're getting warehousing, we're getting all the industrial sites that have been blight for years to be filled with industrial. And industrial's beneficial. Why? It sends no school-aged children to the schools. And that's what's happening here in Parsippany. We have an array of things. We have corridors like East Halsey Road, which is industrial. That's what Palmero Road is all for. So Palmero Road, that, and I grew up in the town, that's been there forever, and it's dilapidated. These buildings, when you say they're A, these are all A buildings, they're not all A buildings. And in 1980, when the market was great, and we have all these companies coming here, it's not 1980 anymore. It's not. And now we're paying the pilot, because we're the third largest corporate center in the state of New Jersey that's losing the most, um, what do you call it, ratables. That's what's happening here in Parsippany. So you don't have to believe me, but if you don't do it, you will believe me eventually. Now, we had that study that came out, Danny, um, with regards, they used suburban Parsippany in their study. Is it Nova Star? Right.
Data company?
That said, Parsippany-
Put together, put together all information about retail, office, apartment, and I think the name of it-
Right. It, it, the, the, the bottom line of the article was that the office market in Parsippany is not going to get better. A 30% vacancy, and that's going to continue to grow, unless towns like Parsippany and the suburban areas decide to do something, to retrofit their office. Um, when I ran for office, that's one thing I said. I was going to repurpose these buildings so we can get the tax radables to come into Parsippany. That's exactly what I said. That's exactly what I'm going to try to do. Uh, of course, I need the, um, approval from the council. And if I get it, that's good. You know, because everybody here in this, in this thing here, you know, it says, oh, this is my pilot program. It's not my pilot program, I'm not a developer. It's not my pilot program. But you know what my job is? To bring radables into the town, that's my job. Because if I don't do that, and we don't do that, it's not just me, if the council doesn't do it, your taxes are going to go up. I can't tell that any, any other way. Now, the council made a comment with regards to, um, why when we do these pilot programs, can the taxes go down? I only did one when I was mayor. So one pilot program is not going to plunge your taxes down, it's just not going to happen. That's not going to happen. Now, here in Parsippany, you know the 70 buildings are going to go down. And I can guarantee you, most of these developers are going to come here for pilot programs. Now, everybody keeps saying the school board, this, the school board, that. What's the school, I mean, maybe you should run for school board. I'm going to sit with the school board, I already spoke to the superintendent of the schools. And we're going to try to work something out. But at the same time, I'm not going to sit dormant and sit here and say, I'm not going to do nothing for the town. Because I am, why? We got to play police. We got to play our DPW. We have to do these things, and we need to collect the revenue. And I'm trying to collect revenue that doesn't affect the residents. Because like, like the councilman said, uh, DiPiero, the more commercial that comes in, the balance starts to shift. Less on, on residential and more on commercial. So that's what we're trying to do. It's a juggling act.
Thank you, Mayor.
You know, it's interesting that back in the 80s, when the economy was good and the interest rates were low, there was a big demand for office space. And us being the highway intersections of all, mostly, mostly from New Jersey, all, all the major highways come through Parsippany, there was a big demand for office space. And in just a few years with this pandemic, how much has changed? Companies realize, and employees realize, they don't have to go into the office five days a week. They can stay home and work on their laptops, maybe one or two or three days. So the companies didn't need as many office spaces. They wanted to consolidate and, and, and cut down on, on offices. And that, that was one of the major reasons that things have changed. I've got a grandson that lives in, in Florida. His company is here in New Jersey, his wife's company is here in New Jersey too. They live in Tampa. They have to come up once a month for meetings with their companies, live at my house, and then fly back to Florida again. And all their work is on their laptops. Um, this is what's changed the demand for office space, basically, and it's not going to come back in the near future. Uh, there'll be no, there'll never be the demand for office space that we had before, never. So we have to, we have to replace these buildings with something that, first of all, is not a blight, and second of all, brings taxes into the town. Because as most of you know, commercial property is assessed based on revenue. Residential property is assessed based on market value. So if the, if the revenue is not there for the commercial properties, and their revenue goes down, the taxes have to go up in, in the homes. So we got it, we want to keep as much of the, the taxes on the commercial properties and off of the homeowners. And, and that's what this whole attempt is that we're doing. Replace these vacant offices with, with warehouses or whatever we can to, to bring in a market.
And, and just one more thing, and Council President, I'll, I'll be quiet if I can. With regards to the commercial real estate agent you were talking about, please forward me his number. Um, I would love to speak to him. Um, that's number one. Number two, um, I, I was looking-
I'm not just-
I was looking through, uh, pilot programs over the last few. Booton does have a pilot program, I just don't know what site it's on, but they do have a pilot program.
To be clear, he wasn't saying the office market is recovering.
Well, they do have a pilot program, just so you know. It, it doesn't matter what a pilot is, it's just, it is what it is.
Excuse me, gentlemen?
And then we're going to let the public speak. I was going to say, he didn't say the office market is recovering, but he said that the market is reacting and redeveloping.
Yeah, the market's not recovering. I wish it was, but it's not.
Gentlemen, we have other speakers here tonight that would like to come before us. Mr. Inglisino, I believe you're here in the audience.
But this is for, now, before, um, before we speak about 6 Silvan, I would like to read something to the record, because just for the residents that are here today. Um, I don't know if this is what this is for, 6 Silvan?
No, I don't believe so.
Is it for 6 Silvan?
No, I have other speakers here, Mr.-
No, 6 Silvan, I think is, uh-
All right, I'll read it into the record later. All right.
Mr. Inglisino?
Well, I, I, I don't, I think, um-
Do you want the town planner to be, uh, to speak?
Well, we have-
I think, uh, thank you, first of all. Um, I think that when the public, uh, when the public portion is up, uh, for 6 Silvan redevelopment plan, uh, I think that, uh, we'd requested that your planner give a presentation on that plan. Uh, I also have, uh, there's, there's representatives from Lifetime Fitness who are here tonight to familiarize the, the council with, with Lifetime Fitness. Um, I defer to the town attorney, you can do that now, or do that at the public hearing for the, for the redevelopment plan.
Mr. Labor?
Yeah, probably at redevelopment, I think we'll get a better time to do it.
Okay, so that's when we talk about, uh, 6 Silvan Way?
Yes.
Okay.
But I do, if you're opening it up for the public, uh, is that one thing? I, I, Councilman, I, myself, I do have to correct you on Booton. Uh, you indicated that Booton doesn't give pilots. Um, the town of Booton did give a pilot, and it gave a pilot to Avalon Bay. I know that, because I personally negotiated the financial agreement.
They didn't give it to Riverwalk?
They, they gave a pilot to Avalon Bay. Not only did they give a pilot to Avalon Bay, they also provided a redevelopment area bond, because there was a vacant building that Booton wanted to, to transform. They were proactive, uh, and Avalon Bay got a pilot and they got a redevelopment area bond. So I just wanted to, to make that clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to, uh, open the public session, please?
Make a motion.
Second.
Councilman Kruhfi.
Councilman Neglia.
Kruhfi. Roll call, Kruhfi. DiPiero?
Yes.
Masella?
Yes.
Neglia?
Yes.
Rimiani?
Yes. Anyone care to speak? You have five minutes. After the five minutes that you have spoken, I ask you to please sit down. Hello. Just give your name, that's all.
Sue DeJesse. I just had a couple of questions, um, after listening to the tax assessor. Are there any current tax appeals right now on any of the 17 vacant office buildings? And if so, which ones?
Dan, you'll have to come up here.
Well, we, we're waiting till it's over, then at the end, we're going to go.
You have five minutes, after your five minutes.
Are you voting on the financial agreements for Avalon Bay tonight?
No.
There's two, 2 Campus Drive and 3 Campus Drive.
Any other questions?
So I don't get answers, right? I just get the questions.
No.
Okay. So here's my questions. I need to know if you're going to vote on these, uh, um, financial agreements. Resolutions 161 and 162 have the redevelopment agreements for these developments, but the redevelopment agreements are not on your website, they're not attached to the agenda. So I'd like to see those. On the financial agreements, I'm wondering if the township attorney has even looked at them. There's a lot of inconsistencies between the 2 Campus Drive and the 3 Campus Drive. Um, there are tax payments. There are, the agreements call for payments to the town on the land and improvements from the last time the properties were assessed. And they're in here, the amounts are in here. So, and they match up with their property record cards. So my question is, have they been paying taxes, that amount of taxes all along, or did they file tax appeals? But the, there's, the, the annual service charge, I'd like to know how that is going to be decided, what the amount is. Because the, the agreements call for taxes to be paid every year, okay, in a certain amount, exactly what they're paying now, or what they're assessed at now. But on the following year, they get a credit for that amount onto the annual service charge. So we don't know what the annual service charge even is. So I'm trying to figure that out, so I can understand if they pay their taxes and they get a credit for those taxes, how much of an annual service charge the town is actually going to get for 30 years? Because it does go up every year, every stage, it goes up a certain percentage, which is fine, that's great. But I'm just wondering, you know, did the township attorney look at these agreements? Did he negotiate any revisions or, you know, changes to these agreements?
Well, well, first of all, I'll say, I know what I don't know, so-
Mr. Labor, she's, she's-
Oh, wait, okay, we're done, yes.
Will you come meet me afterwards? I'd like to know what the affordable housing obligation for the third round for the township, what the number is, and how many 1, 2, 3 bedrooms are going to be done with these two, uh, pilots for Avalon Bay? Um, how many, um, affordable housing units will be actually contributed to our third round obligation? And if they're 1, 2, or 3 bedrooms, um, the tax appeals I asked about, the mayor said that there's more industrial pilots than there are residential. But according to what we've seen now, there's three residential pilots that total 690 units, and only two industrial ones, which is a warehouse and a gym. If there's others coming in, I just let you know, I would like to know what the other industrials are. And lastly, is Beverly Road ever going to be paved over in Lake Iowa? It's awful, since they put in the gas lines. I mean, it's totally awful, well, totally awful.
I can answer that one.
And, um, you have an ordinance here, um, for the lead pipe, um, the assessment, special assessment, but the exhibit A wasn't attached, is it here? I couldn't find it online. That tells you which properties are going to get the special assessment, and I want to just make sure. It's not mine. Okay. Is it somewhere? Is it here, the town clerk?
I'll let-
Wait a minute, I don't know whether, are you finished with your questions?
Somebody said it would be here. I called the clerk's office this morning.
Is that the end of your questions?
Uh, for now, yeah.
We normally don't answer until you're done with all your questions.
Oh, okay, yes, I'm going with my questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Your last question, the lead pipes, that's up in Mount Tabor.
Oh, all of it's up in Mount Tabor?
All of it is Mount Tabor.
Oh, okay, great.
Thank you.
That's it, right? Now I can go?
Yes, please.
As, as regards to North Pacific Road?
It's not lead, by the way, the cast iron pipe.
Okay.
We have no lead pipes.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Um, I'll just go, I got to wait for you to sit down, I guess. How, how we doing it? I don't know how we do, we do it every different every week, so.
Can I put my name and address on there?
Just your name, please.
Just my name?
Yes.
Who, who can answer the question about the land tax credits?
Uh, that will be our financial advisor, or Richard, Richard Wenner, who's an attorney in my office, does redevelopment work. I don't, I know what I don't know. So he will be here at December 5th to answer those questions. But I think that's more the financial advisor who's on the agenda tonight, NW.
So, so with regards to North Pacific Road, we, we received grant money to do a streetscape on North Pacific Road, to redo the actual streetscape. I, I don't know how many times we put the bids out, but the bids come in so much higher than what was anticipated. So we went out to rebid for North Pacific Roads. Yeah, it's, well, it's going to be everything. Land, we're, we're trying to do a whole new streetscape, sidewalks, everything.
Mr. Casse, could you answer the resident's question in regard to the assessment?
Yeah.
Your tax appeals?
You have to come to the microphone.
Come forward, please.
This is recorded, we got, we're going to the microphone.
Yeah.
I looked at it. Four of the properties are under appeal that have the vacancies that are on that list, out of the 17 properties. I'm hoping, like, 2 Hilton Court, where Deloitte used to be, where Deloitte, the Archie Sanco used to be, that's scheduled to be knocked down for a warehouse, that's under appeal right now. I'm going to negotiate with the owner, with the lawyer involved in that case. Uh, it should be settled by the end of the year. Uh, I'm not giving any refunds. I'm going to lower the assessment for next year, uh, due to market conditions. Thirty, thirty Lanex, I'm gonna do the same thing. I think the other one, oh. The, uh, Smith Klein Beach, a property, the vacant lot over there, that's under appeal, but they don't have a case. I'm not gonna offer anything on that. And 169 Lockaway Avenue, you're voting on that tonight. Pending, it's still pending right now till you settle the case, until you approve my settlement. So there's four.
Thank you. Do you mind sitting close to the microphone in case there are other questions for you?
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? You don't have to, Mr. Cogan.
Sorry. Uh, is this one on? Okay. Um, Allison Cogan, I am the president of the Board of Education, and I will be speaking as the president of the Board of Education. Although there has been some information regarding the pilot agreements being considered for new residential development in our town, there's been very little financial information shared by the township with the public and no information shared directly with the Board of Education. Pilot agreements that do not include by specific financial arrangements that involve the Board of Education put undue pressure on current and future taxpayers. Residential development brings additional students to the schools. Pilot agreements that do not include clear revenue sharing agreements with the Board of Education create a situation where the school district is obligated to educate those new students with no additional revenue to offset those expenses. This would also have a direct impact on students and staff. Absent this revenue sharing, the Board of Ed would need to ask the taxpayers of the township to increase their taxes. Following the last pilot controversy involving 1515 Route 10 a few years ago, the Board of Education has been repeatedly told by township leaders that they would not enter any new pilot agreements related to residential development. The Board was also told that the township would make arrangements to compensate the school district for any students attending from residences relating to the current pilot governed project, although nothing has been put in writing. The Board of Education is not in favor of any additional pilot agreements for residential development, especially without written, signed agreements that clearly define the fiscal compensation to the school district for the new student influx. I would urge the council members to vote no on any resolutions or pilot agreements until written financial information is provided that includes agreements with the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cogan.
Allison, I have a question for you. Allison? Um, when properties file for tax appeals and, and, and get settlements, the township has to give them back their tax, their money. The township gives it all back. The school board gives nothing back. So to be fair, if you want a percentage of taxes from the pilots, then when we have tax appeals, since you're 67% of the tax rate, and you want to give back 67% of every tax appeal.
We would love to be part of any negotiations. Right now, we have been left out of the circle altogether.
Well, I believe the mayor said that he would be discussing with your...
And I'm asking, exactly, I'm asking to be, to, and make sure that happens.
I'm sure that will happen. Thank you. Anyone else care to speak?
Me, I'm back. Alicia Dizaboni, living at Fox Hill Road, uh, in Rainbow Lakes, wonderful Rainbow Lakes. My name is Mr. Mayor. I've waited for you to get back to me after a discussion two weeks ago, but, uh, that doesn't seem to be occurring.
Well, I, I don't wanna interrupt, but you are gotten back to by the mosquito commission with regards...
Well, yes, it's, that, that has been...
But it wasn't, um, the email was never directed at me, so...
Okay, no, I did address that I spoke...
You CC'd me, that's all you did.
How many emails do I have? Do you want me to send a different way to communicate with you?
Send them to me, 'cause I, I, I...
I, I'll print out all the ones and note it next record.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
Okay, uh, yeah, I'm just speaking right now is, there's a couple of concerns, and I don't wanna repeat everything because we're all tired of the same thing up here. We're not communicating. We're not working together. We're not cohesive. We're not getting the information. Okay, we're concerned of the community, so let's talk. Let's be real. Put everything on the table. You know, you're concerned about education, you speak. We have so many aboard here. They're in the dark. The mayor's gonna talk about it. Come on. Every little fiber is connected. We have engineering. We have you guys. We have, we have every... The bums on the street, they're all connected. We need to all be notified what is going on here. To leave the education behind, that, that's what builds this community to be stronger, is our children, or whether we're gonna leave because we don't like the schools. Okay? So where I am here is, I don't believe, I, I do believe we are in a, in a crisis situation. I had a whole bunch of things, but listening to all this, I'm trying to decipher what I need to say here. Um, to say other pilots, you can't compare apples to oranges. It has to be apples to apples. Okay, we're all playing a guessing game because nobody has a crystal ball for the right answer. Okay? To say what Moorestown did and what Westfield, we are not the same clientele here. We are not the same population here. We're more lower white class than upper white class. So we have a, well, if you look at the stats, we have a different clientele here. Okay, also, holding whether, unfortunately, we're all divided by Democrats and Republicans. So they all have a different philosophy as well. Not all, okay? Some are truly in the hearts of the people, and I commend the ones who are. Okay, so let me just concern, I'm taking a small part of Parsippany. Parsippany, where I'm at, is Rainbow Lakes, is 1,255 population. That's a census figure of 2020, okay? There is so many problems there, and you said we're gonna, I'm waiting for you to give a date, because you know what? That just shows that this little population is unrested. We have issues with the tax department. I have issues with the action line. I have issues with the police department, the legal department, the police traffic engineer, the zoning and its department, and it list goes on. I am not gonna give you the particulars of what's been going on there, okay? Because it's really unrestful, and that's again, a population of 1,255.
Miss, please speak to us.
Excuse me?
You face us, you do not face the audience.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We have to do the old English way. Yes. So to get a better overview, I think that we need to look at the people that can't make here. Is, look at the next door chat site and see what people are really saying. Look at some other sites, but you cannot compare us to Moorestown and Westfield. That's, that's a class, I have, you know, business. I, I didn't have a master's in business, but I went to a damn good school, and I worked my way through college. And to see what's going on with this town, it's having people fighting still, at least we didn't give a proclamation like last week, that's ridiculous. Give the other person a chance to speak. Yes, we're all frustrated, but it's common courtesy. So I say, all, please provide the information that is needed so we can work together as a community. And, and that is the point. Don't get the education in dark. They're scared. Do we need to scare our children anymore when we went through COVID? Where is, where is the emotion?
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
How many seconds?
Thirty.
Thirty. I leave it to rest, just to show a percentage, a sliver of Parsippany that has issues. Why are we gonna expand and make more? I understand. Plus, quick note, you said that the market has, has changed. The market value of resident property has gone up because of COVID. Okay, so why isn't that money looked at?
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Berrios, 24 Farmstead Drive, you're Mr. Mayor, council. Um, in February, uh, excuse me, January of, uh, 21, I participated in an open letter that, at the time when I was on the Board of Education, uh, we sent out, it was open letter to the public, and, and was sent to the council and the mayor's office of the prior administration. I'm going to share with you a couple of, uh, parts of this letter in case everybody has forgotten. Uh, first thing, Mr. Karifi, to answer your questions, in a demographic study that the Board of Education paid for, uh, we are estimating with the properties from back then that was supposed to be developed, an additional 1,000 schoolchildren. I don't think that's gonna change. If nothing else, it's probably gonna get a little worse. Without taxpayer approval, school districts generally cannot increase the tax levy in any one year by more than 2%. While some adjustments is permitted for enrollment growth, it will nevertheless be extremely difficult to handle increased enrollment without additional revenue sources. Currently, the district provides education for more than 7,300 students and employees, more than 765 teachers, and more than 600 additional support staff. With increased enrollment, the district will need to employ additional teachers, staff, to educate these new students, transportation, transporting these students, and find adequate instructional space. The school district will need revenue sources to pay for this. The 1515 Route 10 development that was negotiated by the township and reapproved on the December 15, 2020 meeting with the provision of a pilot, payment in lieu of taxes agreement, which cripples the school district by diverting tax dollars that would otherwise go to the school, to the township, and to a lesser extent, the county. This means that the developer pays the township direct payment instead of traditional property taxes. We appreciate the town council's pledge to provide a certain dollar amount per child to the school district, as well as their promise to deny future pilot offerings. However, the current pilot agreement, along with the other proposed developments, which may also be granted pilots, have the potential to severely affect the school district's ability to continue the exemplary education our students presently receive. Back through in this writing, we had 1515 Route 10, which had 498 residential units. That was offered, that was given a pilot. The Mark Calley complex, two and three Campus Drive, would have proposed 410 residential units, uh, was on to be approved. It was not a pilot. So yes, we keep saying, uh, the taxes, and that we don't do this, that taxes need to increase in the town, and I hear you, and I understand that. And having been in this town for 30-plus years, and the last five years have seen my taxes go up tremendously, I understand it. I don't wanna see my taxes go up at all. But unfortunately, you live in a town with a three-legged stool. Board of Education will charge the taxpayers 2%, whether we can or can't, need to or want to. But if we go through these pilots, and then when I get on the board and we have to make a decision about schools, or, there's no real estate in Parsippany, so we can't go build a school, number one. Number two is, if we need to, uh, extend the school, we're gonna have to go to the same taxpayers that we're trying to save the money to and hit them for the taxes on the referendum. Okay, so we're gonna ask them for money, so no matter who it's coming from, the taxpayers are gonna be asked to pay. I think it's important that it is communicated to the Board of Education what the plan is. Keep the Board of Education as part of this three-legged government stool in this town. And also to remember that the same taxpayers that we go for the 2% of our tax increase for the Board of Education are the same taxpayers that you're trying to save money to on the other end. Just for the record, I wanna make sure that we understood that in 2021, the board president was Councilman Neglia, and he also approved the disbursement and writing of this email, of this letter.
Your time is up, Mr. Berrios.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak?
I'll be short.
Oh, that's okay. Your name, please?
My name is Mark Philhauer. I live Catty Corner from the old high school. Um, I, we were giving credentials on how long we've lived here. Shortly, I'll be 74 years here. So I think we're in agreement that office space is on the wane. It's not coming back. I don't think there's any argument of that. We can't change that. No question that the township needs to do something proactively. It's good to hear that. The question becomes, what's going to happen in the negotiations? And I was interested to see that, um, Campus Drive two and three are Arbor Bay communities. So I looked them up. The market capitalization of that company, they, they work in 12 states, nearly 300 apartment communities, something on the order of 88,000 apartments. Their revenue last year was $2.3 billion. Their capitalization, $24 billion. By comparison, Twitter, owned by the richest man in the world, 19 billion. What I'm asking the council to do is to be tough advocates for our schoolchildren, for our taxpayers, and for the rest of the residents. You've got, um, in addition to that, it was interesting to see that the CEO brought in $9 million in compensation last year. I don't think you can make the case that Arbor Bay is hurting for money, that they're not going to turn a profit. I think Parsippany needs to be tough negotiators, not just say, well, everybody else is giving in, we need to give in. It's like when states bid against each other for companies. It's a race to the bottom, and we don't wanna lead that race to the bottom. We definitely need to be proactive. We definitely, my wife and I went over to see what was, you know, and we've read two and three Campus Drive. We wanted to see what was there. What's there is empty lots right now, and we were in, you know, we kept looking at the, oh, empty buildings. I added it up to a million square feet in that immediate neighborhood. Obviously, there's a problem. Obviously, it needs to be addressed. The big question is, can you stand up for the schoolchildren who need those funds? I'm a lifelong teacher. I know what those monies go to. They provide textbooks. They keep classes small. Parsippany schools are rated very highly. I worked in a neighboring district that's rated sometimes a little under. Enjoyed seeing Monville come in second to Parsippany. Although, it's a wonderful district, too. Just be our advocates. Don't just say, everybody else is giving pilots. We need to give pilots. Be our advocates. Thank you.
Can I have a strong counsel president?
Of course.
Mr. Philhauer, I, I, I appreciate your, um, comments, and I respect your comments. I just wanna give you an example, you know, everyone thinks we're bowing down. We're not bowing down whatsoever. I'm gonna tell you one of the property owners, I mean, Mark Calley, can't say who it is right now, 'cause I'm negotiating, said that, you know, we need to be structured. If not, we're gonna wait till 2025 for the next round of affordable housing. So that's what we're faced with, and this is what was told to me by the owner of that property. They're gonna be patient, and they're gonna wait, and you're gonna get more affordable housing in round four. We're trying to prevent that. That's why we're trying to get these, um, try to do some of these, uh, pilot programs, so like, uh, council president and councilman, I mean, council vice president De Piero said, and councilman Karifi said. We're trying to get them off the roll for affordable housing. Because I know everybody thinks it's easy to sit up there and say, we, we can fight, and we can fight affordable housing. Good luck. It's all court. It's the judges that make the decisions in Parsippany. How do I know that? March 10, 2015, Supreme Court of New Jersey made a decision that we have to have affordable housing in Parsippany, all of Morris County, and you see, those are the effects that are happening. And it's gonna happen again. Why? Because the legislators in the state can't, can't, for some reason, just can't get together to change the rules in a law, so towns like Parsippany, Monville, Booton, Lockaway, uh, don't suffer from these, um, these laws and these rules.
Mr. Venezi?
Bob Venezi of Parsippany. First, I wanna make it clear that my comments refer only to the pilots at two and three Campus Drive, because they're, they will add students to the Parsippany school system. Prior to last meeting's public session, the mayor and the developer's attorney, Mr. Inglesino, delivered what can only be described as an all-out pilot sales pitch. The sales pitch contained the expected embellishment of a pilot's positive points while omitting any points that could be interpreted as negative. It also included a generous amount of scare tactics. Leading off was the mayor, who brought up two points that I would categorize as unsubstantiated. Leading off was the mayor, who brought up two points that I would categorize as unsubstantiated. First, the mayor stated emphatically that these pilots were necessary because of the rise in construction costs and interest rates. The big problem here is that 2 and 3 Campus Drive were only purchased one month ago. During that short period of time, construction costs have remained about the same, and interest rates have actually gone down. So the mayor's rationale while these pilots are necessary is not valid. And for that reason alone, these pilot ordinances should be withdrawn tonight. Next, the mayor claimed that if the pilots are not granted, the projects will not get done, Parsippany will lose revenue, and property taxes will go through the roof. That statement is a speculation, a mislead, and a scare tactic, all rolled into one. The possibility that Avalon Bay, one of the largest REITs in the country, bought that property on the gamble of obtaining a pilot and would walk away from their investment at 2 and 3 Campus Drive after owning them for only one month is very small. And the mayor knows full well, your taxes are not going to skyrocket even if Avalon Bay pulls out. Because of the 2% cap oil, you can count on property taxes going up between 2 and 3.5% with or without a pilot. Mr. Inglesino's presentation was professional, factional, and informative, but it was also incomplete. Here are just some of the more important details that were left out. Mr. Inglesino stressed the school district will still receive a share of the land taxes if a pilot is granted. What he left out is that the school district is currently receiving a share of the land tax and will continue to receive that same amount whether the pilot is granted or not. The school district gets no additional money from the pilot, but it will have to pay for additional students. Mr. Inglesino made absolutely no mention that the developer would be receiving a land tax credit under the pilot. That's an LTC, they call it. According to the financial charge that were distributed, Parsippany will rebate approximately 75% of the land tax. Avalon Bay is already getting a sweetheart deal on the building improvements on Campus Drive, so why does a company also need a rebate on the land taxes? And how does that rebate affect what the school district's going to get? Mr. Inglesino also failed to disclose that under the proposed pilot, Parsippany will forfeit $47 million in property taxes over 30 years, a number easily derived from the totals that appear on the financial sheets. What is Parsippany getting for $46 million, $47 million? And is the mayor, the council, and the public comfortable with that price tag? Next, Mr. Inglesino's statement that the school district receives all of the budget money that it's entitled to is entirely true, but there were no details about what happens after the pilot kicks in. Let's say that the 410 apartment units at Campus Drive add 50 students to the schools. We already know that the pilot is not contributing anything extra for the approximately $1 million cost of educating these additional students, but somebody has to pay for them, since their costs will be included in the school's next, district's next budget, they will be included in the next budget. As Mr. Inglesino stated, the town must pay for everything that the school district asks for, but that money only comes from properties that are taxed ratable base, which includes every homeowner, but not the pilot properties on Campus Drive. In short, the Parsippany taxpayer must absorb all of the additional educational costs that the pilot properties are exempted from. Mr. Inglesino also neglected to tell the audience that Parsippany will most likely have to pay out more money to provide municipal and education services than it will receive in pilot payments. For example, according, we're going to pay more money than we're getting in, and that's bad business for businessmen, for councilmen, for anybody.
Thank you.
Just one thing, counsel president. Councilman Krippe did allude to why there's a pilot on 2 and 3 campus with regards to the, you know, preventing residential on 7 campus. So that was, Councilman Krippe did explain that, one of the reasons why. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Andy Chaffo recently re-elected to the Board of Education in town, and I wanted to speak a little bit about the planned residential development that will impact our community. A lot of the speakers spoke, I think, very eloquently about the impact that a pilot program, a residential pilot program, will have to the town. The Parsippany School District is in large part funded by local property taxes. The taxes are a combination of residential property taxes and corporate property taxes. And recently, developers have been using this tax abatement scheme, which is legal, known as a pilot program, come in a couple of different forms, but the end result is it's tremendous benefit to the developer. The two large residential projects for Campus Drive, and now the others that have been added, will add in excess of 600 residential units. Conservative estimate would be 50 to 60 schoolage children. That would be at least a million dollars of additional cost to the school district and ultimately, the taxpayers of the town. I'd also say the pilot would reduce significantly the taxes that developers would have to pay in property taxes. The shortfall would definitely be funded by residential property taxpayers, and these programs last for 30 years. As the Board President said, the school district and fire districts receive their funding from property taxes, yet they are excluded from these programs, and there's been no dialogue with the school board on these programs. The attorney for Campus Drive developers, Mr. Inglesino, presented at the November 9 Town Council meeting. He did an excellent job explaining the development and the pilots in general, as Mr. Vanezia said. There were some things that were left out. And I also want to make an observation. Mr. Inglesino, I know him, he's been town attorney, he's worked for the town in other capacities, he's been in and around Parsippany for a long time, many of you are friends with him. But I have to remind you, he is the developer's attorney. He is the adversary in this negotiation. So when you're negotiating with him, to see somebody walk out with him in a very friendly manner, kind of gives me pause. I have to think, are you really negotiating that hard with him? At the last Town Council meeting, there was no detailed information about the pilot. The council voted 4 to 1 to advance the pilot resolution, and after hearing the concerns of many residents at that meeting, the council committed to having the pilot up on the website by November 13. As of 3 o'clock this afternoon, there was no information on the town's website about this pilot program. So when you say there's misinformation or propaganda, it's truly a lack of information, where people have to fill in the blanks with their own presumptions of what this really means. You know, Parsippany is an exceptional town. We have great schools, easy access to transportation, low crime rate, relatively low property taxes. I'm a vice president at a land surveying company. We do primarily large-scale residential and commercial projects. And we're the first person, whenever something's going to get developed, that is on site. In 2020 with COVID, there was certainly a downturn in activity, but from the middle of 2020 through 2022, we saw a meteoric rise, as did all real estate developers and land development activities. Highest, high interest rates have paused this right now, and there's no doubt that office space is under pressure, but residential development is not, and it will come back. So I really, I have to urge you to not offer pilots for residential programs. They simply don't make sense. They last for a long time, the reduction in taxes is enormous, and at the end of the day, it's going to be the residential property taxpayers who are left holding that burden. So thank you for that.
My name is Ken Kaplan, and I've lived in Parsippany for about 28 years. I've also been a commercial real estate broker for over 40 years. Now, there've been some dire predictions here, some dire projections. Projections are just that, they're projections. I mean, early this year, there were projections that the Jets were going to the Super Bowl. That's happening. So I'm all for development. As a commercial real estate broker, I thrive on it. I thrive on development and redevelopment, but I like to see it to be market-driven. I don't think it's the job of government to pick favorites, to give some developers a hand up and not do the same for other developers. I've got an example of a project that happened in Clifton. There was an older building, a large older building, 65 Industrial South in Clifton. It was an out-of-date manufacturing building, I think it was a pharmaceutical company. And the building was completely made over, including raising the roof in 2017. What they did was, they raised the roof to 27 feet from, I think it was probably somewhere around 16 or 18 square feet as a manufacturing building, and they changed the exterior skin, they installed new electrical, mechanical systems, T5 lighting, sprinklers, and more. And that building then became fully leased. The assessment on that went in from 2017, it was $4,309,000, and the following year, it was assessed for $11 million. So that's 2 and 1/2 times the original assessment, and it became a great ratable for the city. And that was without any pilot program. So the market is really driving the building of industrial space all over the state. You don't need incentives to put up industrial buildings or to improve existing industrial buildings, warehouse buildings. The rental prices for new warehouse buildings are over $20 a square foot now. It's a huge increase over what it used to be. Now, if you think I'm just, you know, a local independent real estate broker, I have a market analysis that was issued by Newmark, which is a major, major firm, in the first quarter of 2022. I'll read from this. Limited supply of developable land and existing warehouse and distribution space have driven rents up in recent years. The recent stockpiling of inventories and surging imports at the Port of New York and New Jersey have intensified competition for space, fueling bidding wars among tenants. Asking rents grew by 22.9% over the past year. That was from '21 to '22. So, I mean, this is phenomenal market for warehouse building. I don't think any developer of a warehouse building needs an incentive, needs a pilot program to go forward with the warehouse. And some of these existing office buildings, if you take out the middle floors and add loading, could actually be converted to warehouse. Other possible uses with, Councilman DePiro was talking about overlay zoning, you could have marijuana-growing facilities in some of these office buildings if we're allowed.
We don't have that.
Huh? What's that?
We don't have that. Continue.
You may not want that, but I'm saying this is a possibility other than offering a pilot. That would be a market-driven thing. And why you would not want it is beyond me. It's a farm product, and it's very tightly secure and whatnot, so, I mean, that's another issue. But I mean, there are other things that these buildings can be done, other than at the taxpayer expense granting these pilot programs. I want to give you pictures of the development in Clifton. You can, Nancy Dyer, with a couple.
This is before COVID, 2017.
Thank you.
What year was this?
2017.
2017, before pandemic. Yes, but COVID is what fueled the need for the warehouse space, because people's habits completely changed. Instead of going to the retail store, they're ordering everything online, and that's why you need all these warehouses. And the warehouse, the prices of the warehouse space went up tremendously since then. It's a much stronger market than it was then. So even with the increase in interest rates and volume clause, the rents have gone up astronomically. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Pradeep Krichandani. I live in the Glenmont community. Actually, the purpose of my visit here today was to talk about the road structure at Glenmont, but clearly, this pilot issue is taking precedence. So let me just understand it. I believe you had three people from the Board of Education who have told you, we are, you know, we have capacity issues, and no amount of taxes that the pilot program will give or not give us will make up that. And I think so there was a question about 2 and 3 Campus Drive, perhaps even adding in to the 600 units, so that it is going to actually create a further issue in the school district, right? And then we had a commercial real estate gentleman who gave you all kinds of information. He's professional. It's his business. He knows it better than, I think so collectively, probably all of us. He's lived it for about 40 years. What I think so is being said to us is a false choice. We're being told that if we don't do anything, our taxes will go up. But guess what? If we do something, our taxes are still going to go up. So I don't know how this is a damn good thing. I apologize. I don't mean to swear, but that's the reality. That's the frustration you feel in this room. I just say it out in comparison. I appreciate Mr. Justin talking about on behalf of us. So I have just two questions. One, because we came for on behalf of Glenmont, we just want to know what progress has been made since the last meeting on October 17. The second question I have, more related to the pilot program is, so it seems like there was a vote of 4 to 1, you know, in favor of the pilot. What are the options as a citizen? Can this be overturned? Again, thank you for the opportunity.
I would like to answer one question. I find it funny how we disregard our experts, but when an expert, an expert in the audience comes up, they're the professionals all of a sudden when it comes to the township. That's not how it works. We do listen to our professionals, number one. We listen to our professor, our tax assessor. We have our businessmen, we have a whole bunch of professionals. So to sit here and say that, you know, tonight that you heard from professionals, I've never worked with any of these professionals, never worked with you, Mr. Kaplan, never have. And you're stating a project here from 2017, and if this is a warehouse, I wouldn't want to see a warehouse like this in Parsippany. I can tell you that much. I wouldn't want to see one like that. And I'm going to get on with the Board of Education members coming up here. Once this public session is done, I need to make a comment.
Yeah, just want to respond.
Wait, hold on. Oh, I'm sorry about Glenmont. About Glenmont, I spoke to the engineer today. He's going to check with the NJDOT with regards, because they have to apply for those grants going into next year, because we already got our grant money from May of this, no, is it March of this year?
Yes.
March of this year. What's that?
Sir, are you going to?
Yeah, I'll have to filter offline.
Yes, please. All right.
I just, you know, I emailed his attorney earlier today, so we've been going back and forth. About seven different developments that also have a similar problem, it's the same builder, so. We have been in contact with his attorney.
Just in response to the second question, really quickly, I agree with what the gentleman just said. The only two people we have heard from has been our tax assessor and has been the developer's attorney, John Inglesino. And I think it's important for us to get a much wider perspective. And if the commercial real estate community, who really are the best people to tell us on what can be done with these assets, is divided, we should listen to them on the issue and shouldn't just rush this one solution down everybody's throats before the end of the year, which it seems like everybody up here is intent on doing.
Well, I don't think, I don't think, first, I don't think this can rush down any of the stuff. You've had this, and I'll read a statement, you knew about this for a long time, Councilman. These things were going to happen. So to sit here and say you didn't know is disingenuous, number one. Number two, you're going to hear from our financial expert with regards to pilot programs on December 5, and I'll be speaking to him, is tonight the resolution's on for tonight?
Yes.
All right, so I'll be speaking to the gentleman as well, and I know this gentleman, very bright, very good, professional in real estate, professional in finances and pilot programs. I don't know anybody here that are experts in pilot programs. We have an expert coming on, and from there, we'll see what he says.
I think just the problem there, though, is why did we, there isn't, well, the problem is, why did we even start this process in the first place if we didn't have clearly the buy-in from the Board of Ed? We don't even have a really deep understanding of the financials, because I've read what's been sent to me. I can't be the only one that has a lot of questions and concerns that we haven't even gotten to.
I'm going to respond later on.
I know, I know you will. But why start the process without the information along with the public buy-in? That's the problem. The process here has been completely, has been abysmal. Should not have been done this way.
Just a minute. Mr. Mocella, this was, this came before us on September 19, 2023, and it was on for title only. And it was, the motion was made by Councilman Krippe, was seconded by Councilman Neglia. Then it came before us again to be put on for tonight, and that was for November 9, 2023, for a second reading. So this- So this has been before us for quite a while. This is not something that just came before us.
I just want to say, it was brought up about two and three campus. That's part of our affordable housing plan, so there's nothing we can do about that. Do I want all of these apartments being built in a town that I've lived in for 51 years? Absolutely not. But the courts are telling us, we have to build these things. Regardless, two and three is going to add schoolchildren, regardless of there's a pilot or there's not a pilot. Okay? So, the school, the school board unfortunately is going to have to deal with this problem. We wish we could use that as a defense so that they didn't, they weren't able to build these things here. That's the problem. And if you go back and look at the record, I'm on record as saying, and this is before Mayor Barberio was here, when Mayor Soriano was here, that I felt that, yes, we should negotiate, and that the school board should get their share of money, whatever they weren't getting from the land tax. Okay? So, and I'll say that right now again. I don't want the schools to have to be put up with this burden, and I think that they should get money. Okay? But it should be fair, too, when there's a tax assessment, that the town should be on the hook for that.
Tax appeal.
I mean, the tax appeal, that the school should also be, have to reimburse, just like the town does. Okay? But these are all already part of the plan, and unfortunately, these judges forced it down every town's throat. We have no choice whatsoever. All we can do is try to fill up some of these areas where they want to build these apartments with these warehouses and stuff, so that we don't get that burden on our schools. That's what we're trying to do here.
Sir, wait, sorry.
I didn't hear the answer to what happened. Please, it was already voted on four to one.
There's nothing in the crowd, there shouldn't be yelling in the crowd.
No, you can't, you really, sir, you've already spoken, I'm sorry.
I didn't get the answer.
Well, sorry.
Nobody answered.
What was the question?
You tell people to sit down, you don't answer that.
Ma'am, please.
Thank you. Sir, you'd like to speak?
Yes. I wrote out what I was going to say here tonight.
Your name, please?
I can read in about four minutes.
Your name, please?
Patrick D. V. Antonio. Something that's already been discussed here, and it's going to be a repeat, but I've also added a new dimension here that hasn't come up yet. So please give me about four minutes or so to read this, and I realize something that's going to be a repeat. Primarily, my focus this evening will be on schools and pilot agreements. And schools typically make up close to two-thirds, 70% of the overall municipal budget. I mean, first of all, pilots have a profound effect on a municipality's tax rate. I gather we all know Parsippany's base tax rate is based upon numerous subtaxes that are set by agencies such as a municipality, the school district, Morris County, fire districts, libraries, et cetera. There's even more, but those are the main ones. Tax rates are determined after these institutions approve their respective budgets. When a developer seeks a pilot, it enters into negotiations with the municipality and not the local school district, not the county, not the fire districts, et cetera. Typically, a developer's sales pitch to municipal officials, typically a developer's sales pitch to municipal officials is usually along the lines that the municipality, not the public schools, will receive three to four times the amount of the revenue that the municipality would normally receive if the developer was to pay taxes as a regular development without a pilot. That is because a pilot, because the pilot payment is made directly to the municipality, and this payment is not shared to support the other entities that make up the tax rate, including the school budget, which is the main item here. The school portion of the tax rate will ultimately need to be increased, as we've all said, in order to cover the loss of the ratable of the new developer for, which, and it's replacing the old development. And additionally, the children, have additional children attending schools, which we've all said already tonight, as a result of these developments. And in the end, the taxpayer ultimately loses and is forced to pay additional taxes to make up for the lost tax revenue to these public institutions. The market value of a development increases dramatically when a pilot agreement is approved. This makes a development very attractive to a real estate investment trust or a bank that would providing finances to a developer to construct the buildings, because over a period of, say, 30 years, a developer pays only about 25% of what taxes would be if the development was paying taxes like any other development or residence in town. These institutions will lend more money to a pilot development than a non-pilot development, which has more exposure and a loss capital. What if the development fails? And that's the new aspect here I want to really get into a little bit. As of 2020, there are close to 750,000 units in multifamily housing buildings in New Jersey, a number that is rapidly increasing. In my view, the market will eventually reach a point where the sale and leasing of these units becomes too competitive for these developers or owners to find new occupants, and they'll have to pay or ask for lowering the, asking rents or asking prices to be more competitive, and not, will not be able to pay the debt on these sites. Real estate investment trusts and banks will be left with properties that have a much lower value than the amount of money that was originally borrowed by the developer. When this happens, the market bubble will burst, leaving these overvalued development sites susceptible to foreclosure. In fact, the last entity owning the property or holding a mortgage will be stuck with the failed development.
Thirty seconds.
With the failed development. This is exactly what happened in 2008, when Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac packaged $150 billion in loans into investment packages, only to have them fail and be deemed worthless. We all remember what happened in 2008. This is where we're headed. And that has also happened in 1987, with the office market collapse. Prior to 1987, banks were actually competing to finance and construct new office buildings.
Sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
I don't have, I haven't used five minutes yet. I know how long it takes me to read this.
We have, we have.
I have the clock right here.
Your time is up. Thank you. Anyone else like to come up and speak?
Let me finish my last paragraph, okay?
No, I'm sorry, sir, your time is up.
I urge you to vote no.
Sir, your time is up, please.
For Symphony Street is at stake.
Next person would like to speak, please.
I get the same thing every time I come in. Instead of something constructive.
Sir, I'm not going to have a.
I have extra copies. Would anyone in the house like to read this?
Yes, sure.
It's just to read the whole thing.
Well, perhaps.
Patrick, want to give it to me?
Yeah, well, we'll.
Make a copy of it for everybody. Okay.
Would someone else like to come up and speak?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like one.
Thank you.
My name is John Roderick, local resident here for 12 years, give or take. Also a local real estate agent in both the commercial and residential world. I speak up against these pilots as somebody who lives in a building that has excessive rent. There's no reason for these corporations to come in and get tax break, get tax breaks, when for example Avalon Bay over here in Boopin is charging $3,000 a month for a one-bedroom. There's no justification needed for it. Industrial rates have gone through the roof, and as Ken Cap said, we can't, we can't find spaces for tenants. If you put in these commercial buildings, there's no need to give them any kind of tax break, period. The residential rents are through the roof, industrial rents are through the roof, and they're not going anywhere anytime soon. Do we need more housing, and are those buildings dilapidated? Yes, but there's no need to give them a tax break for it. They're going to come in anyway. Avalon Bay, in Avalon Bay, any major developers are going to come in no matter what, whether they get that tax pilot or not. We all, somebody brought up Morristown, how they brought in a huge tax pilot program. Their taxes have gone through the roof, and you cannot drive through town anymore. You can't find parking, you can't go out to eat, everything's packed. You can't, although it's improved, there's no quality of life there anymore. I don't really have much more to say on that, but, you know, simply said.
Thank you.
Good evening, my, Mr. Mayor and Town Council members. My name is Hank Keller, and I've lived in Parsippany for 54 years. Regarding the current issues of granting pilot accommodations to the three parcels being considered tonight, or two parcels, I have a few observations and comments that I'd like you to consider. Has Parsippany Superintendent of Schools, by the way, this is a reiteration of some of the other things that we have heard, but it's what I prepared, and I had no idea that we would have such strong commentary from our school board people and from other citizens. So I'll just continue and be finished before my three, five minutes are up. Has Parsippany Superintendent of Schools and School Board been apprised of these pilot locations, which might or probably contain some students to be added to our school's student population? Have you made financial agreements with the school board to pay for any new students that come from those pilot locations? Will any of those schools need new constructions? New construction that will cost over $5 million, just curious, but obviously for PLA reasons? I've read the many letters to the editors posted in Parsippany Focus, Patch, and TAP. I've also listened to Mr. Inglesino's lecture on the beauty and benefits of pilot programs. I have no issue with Mr. Inglesino's explanation of pilots. After all, he's an attorney, a businessman, by the rules of his profession is doing exactly what he's obligated to do. That is to advocate in the strongest possible way he can for his clients' interests. I respect him for that. But we as citizens of Parsippany, and you as the people who were elected and have promised to protect us, you might not be doing the right thing in this instance. Our own tax assessor has written publicly that pilot programs are not in the best interest of the municipalities that have accepted them. And tonight, he's changed his mind. I can respect that, too. To me, it seems that it's reasonable to try to limit the size of the pilot, as well as the duration of free tax abatement. Perhaps the seller could then reduce his sales price if he had to find a way to attract a new buyer or a new operator. I frankly would like to see our township attorney, Mr. Lavery, and this board work to, and have the freedom to negotiate with the, with Mr. Inglesino and his client, so that we could get a more favorable agreement, rather than 30 years and some huge number of millions that would be abated, and therefore have to be charged to the taxpayers. Lastly, I am sure that our mayor and town council has noticed that the recent election has knocked out one of your candidates right out of the box, and B has had all of the candidates much closer in count than most of us would have thought possible in what was a strongly Republican town. And C, we had this very same result in the school board elections, where another incumbent was voted out of office. I believe it is the result of the recent PLA debacle. I believe that if you just help, ask us to swallow another financial tax hit and to like it, we will see more disappointment in your political lives. I personally do not want to see that happen, but the control of the game is in your hands. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Holland.
I think there's been a lot of very good discussion tonight. I'm not going to try to repeat everything, I'm going to try to point out a few things that maybe haven't been undercovered. First of all, the land tax credit, if you're not familiar with Mr. Lavery, is when, whatever the tax on the land is, if somebody gets a pilot program, then everything except for the municipal part of that, which is about 25% typically, goes away. The town, the developer gets a credit off of their 10% or whatever that negotiated.
No, no, that I understand, but just so you know, Mr. Clarkin, I'm not negotiating the agreement because this is not my forte. So somebody from our.
Okay, I don't waste time.
Yeah. Sorry, I just wanted to make that clear.
Then you get to the point, why are all these coming in at 10% if they're going to be done at all? Because maybe they could be, 15% is certainly a doable number for these things. I believe the town does need redevelopment, no question about it. I don't think using pilots to do the vast majority of it, majority of it is the way to go. Then, there's a, this may get a little legal or technical, but the campus drive property was approved without a pilot for apartments, condos, whatever, back in 2021 by the planning board. Are you aware of that? I better not ask a question, because I'll, it's my understanding that that was done. And once that's done, that property should not be available for a pilot, because that proves that there is no need for a pilot or redevelopment. So I believe that it is improper to allow for a pilot legally on that particular area, just based on the law. So I would like, ask you, Council, to look into that. Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening, Tom Williams. Any other information?
No.
Okay. First of all, I thank you for trying to do something for Parsippany. How we're making a decision based on fear is not a good way to make a decision. One thing I now realize, our taxes are too high. And that, therefore, that's one element of, one tool that you have in order to bring in new buildings and new people, is through lower taxes. Obviously, these people were smart enough to hire a smart attorney to make this happen, use a pilot. I'm not sure what a pilot program is yet, but does it have a limit? Is it 30 years? That seems like it's an astronomical number, if it's 30 years of being taxed, loan, or tax subsidy for a building. Why not five? Why not 10? Why not in incremental stages? Why not the first five years is this, second five years is this, and keep on moving up our taxes so they remain whole again, rather than this blank statement? Also, I heard it's transferable. Why should the second, third, fourth owner have the advantage of this tax benefit? Why should it not be a one-time-only basis? Now, the previous speaker mentioned, why can't we negotiate our own deal? Why do we need a pilot program? Why can't we have a tax assessor, and the mayor, and some other people negotiate with these builders to make this situation work? Besides taxes, we have regulations and permits which drive some builders crazy in our township. Maybe we can eliminate or minimize those areas, too. Also, if we are going to be embedded with these developers, that is, providing them our money, our money all through here, to help them build this development for all of us, but actually it's for them, why not be income-based? Or if they make a profit, why can't we make a profit with them? Why can't we share? Why can't we be a partnership? Other firms have done this over the years. They work with the builder, and they get a percentage of the sale if they sell. But they won't go with this, but that's how it should be. Finally, if we have so many empty buildings, maybe we can take one building and make it into a school for all the new children that are coming in. That's another suggestion for the future. So again, I want to thank you for trying something, and as they say at IBM many years ago, think.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Anyone else like to come forward and speak? I need your name first, please.
Elaine Gavalias. I think Councilman Justin Musella is a blessing to Parsippany for the intelligent questions he asks, and putting the taxpayer first over special interest groups. And I would like to yield my time to the. And I would like to yield my time to the gentleman that did not get to finish his, what he was talking about.
We don't yield.
There's no yielding of time. There's no yielding of time.
No, I'm sorry. No, there's no yielding. We don't have, there's no yielding.
She said 33, 34.
Okay.
My concern with the over-construction of high-density buildings, I suspect in 15 or 20 years, the number of these types of developments built through a pilot in Parsippany could easily reach 20 or 30 if this precedent were enacted. When the market takes a nosedive, these institutions will suffer dramatic losses of revenue for their investors because of these gilded utopian settings. Another potential problem would be unpaid taxes. When a development falters, the first item not getting paid is the taxes. In the end, when the market collapses, as I predict, it will be the taxpayer who is left with the outstanding balance that the pilot creates in the local tax rate. With respect to schools in Parsippany, this will have a two-prong effect. Not only do the 15 schools need to be maintained and staffed through a yearly budget, there will also be a need for school additions because of an increase in students. The last school built in Parsippany was in 1969. Most of these buildings have become antiquated and will need repair and renovation. A new school addition costs at least 300, I guess, 300 per square feet or, I don't know what that, what's that? Okay. Typically, a renovation costs even more than, even more per square foot. Another cost thrusts upon the taxpayers. This will significantly add to the school budgets. I urge you to vote no on these Pandora Box pilots. Parsippany's future is at stake here.
Anyone else like to come forward?
Bridgette Cosetto. I understand residential is coming with regardless, that's why I don't feel that they should, that they should be able to participate in the pilot. I understand that we need to do something with the empty space, but there are industries where not everybody is work from home and with all the building going on in Morris County, especially all the apartment buildings going up, there is a need for storage units. There are other industries. I feel like we, we have the upper hand because of it's such prime location to play hardball and not give in to developers. Personally, that's just my opinion. Storage units are hideous and so are warehouses, but they come with their benefits and there is a need for them. But my only real, but my real, I think the real red flag for me from listening about pilots is now that we're back in business with Mr. Inglesino. With all due respect, Mayor, that is why you lost reelection. I feel like we were made, the residents of this town were made fools of. And I feel that, to me, it's, no offense to the council, but it's a bad look. That's how I feel personally. I haven't forgotten and there's a lot of people in this town that I haven't forgotten. Thank you.
Anyone else like to come forward?
Carl Journey. Carl Journey, I know most of you guys on the council 30, 40 years, you're all good people. I have to say that Parsippany Board of Education, those guys are fantastic. I have one kid graduating Ivy School, another one got into a program that was, oh, sorry, look at you guys, was amazing. Parsippany Board of Education, fantastic, great school system, great schools. And I want you to know, I know all you guys pretty much, you're all good people, the Puro defenders, we're not going to talk about your Little League team, but it was a good team. But anyway, a lot of the people brought up very good points and you want to keep the school system good because, I'll tell you what, it makes this town very, very desirable. Also, the property in this town, we have a lot of access points, 287, 80, 46, 10. A lot of industries want that. And I know you guys know a lot more than I do, trust me. But I was just going to say, please don't rush into anything and get us into a bind. And I deal with different things and you can negotiate. And I don't know exactly about the pilot program, that's why you guys are elected, but they don't have to maybe take 100% tax cut like the one gentleman was saying. Maybe offer them a 25%, but the 75% they have to add to that school budget along with the rest of the town budget. Like I said, I wasn't planning on speaking here today, I was sitting in the back patiently, but just felt like something needed to be said. And like I said, you guys do a great job and keep it up, but let's not rush into anything too quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come up and speak? Seeing some, no, no one come, oh, sorry.
Good evening, my name is Jack Young. I live at 179 Intervell Road in Parsippany. My beloved wife and I have lived there for 47 years and paying taxes all that time too. Why didn't you tell me the pilot was available? I could have reduced my taxes by 75% if I've listened carefully tonight. It is immunity, I'm trying, I think we need to be, we need to end on a little more humor tonight because we've heard the tug in the pole, but I think there are some things we ought to ask ourselves about this. How can it be that there is one councilman who has raised these points that say, this is not good for the taxpayers, the developer is going to pay about 25% of the taxes they normally would have paid under the pilot? That just doesn't sound to me like it makes any economic sense. So the other four members of the council might want to think about that or take him behind the woodpile and straighten him out if he's wrong.
They've tried that.
I think that there's no need to repeat to you, because you're all very intelligent people, the points that have been made here. I think what you might also want to observe is that I don't believe any one person has come to this microphone this evening and said, oh yeah, we'd like pilot, this is why we ought to do it. So where is the push coming from for that? You might want to ask yourselves about that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. Have I missed anyone? Seeing someone, seeing no one come forward, like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to close open session.
Second.
Roll call, Karifi.
Yes.
G. Piero.
Yes.
Musella.
Yes.
Neglia.
Yes.
Brignani.
Yes.
Ordinance introduction.
Any discussion after?
One of those things.
Excuse me, yes.
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment after, with regards to... Tonight we had several Board of Education members come up here with regards, and I'm going to be negotiating with them. I just hope those same Board of Education members were at the meetings when there's 3,332 units that were passed from 2018 to 2021. On that administration, you have 3,332 units, what are we going to do? Did you come here? I'm going to negotiate with the school board, but I'm going to be very candid with everybody here tonight. When we have uncollected taxes, well, maybe the school board should give us our 63% back. That doesn't happen. We do tax appeals, maybe the township should get the 63% back, but we don't. We don't get any of that back. As regards to PLAs, Mr. Heller, PLAs have nothing to do with the schools. They don't have PLAs, the township does. So if they're going to build a school, they're not subject to the project labor agreement. Yeah, I just wanted to make that, you know, make that clear with regards to all this. The township had every intention to negotiate with the school board, okay? And why do we need these ratables? Well, we need the ratables for several reasons. And everyone keeps saying, you know, we have experts, we're going to do this and that. The market's bad. You know, to sit here and not be upfront and honest, I'm going to be upfront and honest with regard. I heard a lot of people here had to say tonight, but I speak with my tax assessor a lot and he says the market's not going to turn around, not for a long time. And I do wanted to say one thing with regards to the pilot programs and how they work, okay, because somebody, Tom, Mr. Williams, had made a pretty good comment. 95% of the dollars go to the township, 5% goes to the county. That's how pilot programs work. What the administration does from that point on with the fire district in that area, in the schools, we won't negotiate. I said that from day one. I don't know if there are any negotiations when the 3,332 units were thrown upon the township. And that's no fault to the former administration. And I'll tell you why I say that. Because they're bound by affordable housing. Everybody says fight, fight, fight. Let me tell you something, you go into court, and I know this, I was administered, I never would eclipse, they lost their immunity. Judge doesn't really, they just go by the rule of law and that's what they go by. And that's what they would do here in Parsippany, the rule of law. They'll come in, they'll tell you, well, sorry, this is what you're going to have to do, or you'll lose your immunity. You know, I don't really feel like using my immunity, why? Because the developer has the upper hand. They can just pretty much bypass our zoning, our planning and everything. If I'm wrong, Mr. Lavery, let me know.
No, you're correct, Mayor.
So, you know, everyone thinks that, you know, and I appreciate everybody's comments here tonight, but to come up here and say that only one council member cares, that's not true. He cares, I'm not going to say he does or doesn't, but so do the other four, they care just as much. I've been in town here 59 years, I grew up here. Mr. Karifi's been here for a very long time. Mr. Neglia, a long time, Mr. DePaul, Mrs. Brignani. We all have lived here for a very long time. But I do not appreciate, and I don't mean this any in the public, that I'm going to negotiate a contract or something with the Board of Ed and they come here tonight. It's hard to negotiate, I'm not going to lie. That's something that we negotiate in a closed session to discuss. That's how negotiations work within inter-local agreements. So to sit here and come up here knowing that, they don't even know what was on my mind, they didn't know that whatsoever. So that being said, I just hope the school board and its members, if they want to negotiate with me, I just hope that you put a line on them in your budget that says for uncollected taxes, because we have to. And we have a $2 million tag for uncollected taxes, the township picks it all up. That's a big nut to pick up. I don't know what it is right now, but if it's in the millions, that's a big nut for the town to pick up for uncollected taxes. We have a budget too, just like the school board has a budget. I'm willing to work with the school board, but it makes it difficult when you're supposed to have negotiations, I spoke to certain members and then, you know, but I tell you, I was at some of these 3,332 unit approvals and I saw nobody from the school board there then. I could be wrong, I could be wrong, maybe they were, but I didn't see it. And why is it important to have our ratables? Now, Mr. Benizi, you said that the interest rates went down. They're 8%. I just looked, they're 8%. When I was the mayor the first time around and we were doing negotiation, I think with United Postal Service, I think it was 2%. So yeah, you're not going to give, when they're, you're not going to give, you're not going to give, I just looked at, I just looked at today's results, so you know. But we're not going to give pilot programs if it's 2%. And to sit here, the costs haven't gone up, they have gone up. We can't even get vehicles for the township because of the cost. We put it in the budget and next thing you know, it is so overpriced. We can't even get parts. I was today with the DPDW director, he basically said, I can't get the truck, I can't get this. It's still out there, COVID had such an effect on not just Parsippany, on all the surrounding towns, just trying to get supplies here for the town. So that being said, I'm truly looking forward to a dialogue with the school board to see what we can come up with. I already spoke to the fire department in that, in their area, so I'm looking forward to negotiating with them. But I'll tell you this though, I'm not, I believe it has to be give and take both ways. It has to be. The town cannot continue to suck up all the tax appeals because everyone says, don't do a pilot program. So when the tax appeals come in, guess what? We take the brunt of it, the township takes the brunt of it, the residents take the brunt of it. We take it, the school board takes none of it. We take it all. We can't hire, we can't, we can't do certain things because we take the brunt of all those tax appeals and uncollected taxes. So thank you, Council President.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes, thank you. Well, I'm not a proponent of pilots. In today's economic times, I do support them for warehouses, structures that don't have school-aged children, office buildings, because as the mayor had stated, 95% of the funding comes to the town, which can help in aiding police departments, can help in aiding the fire department and everything else in town. I think that's important. I am very concerned about residential. Two and three campus are affordable housing projects that Parsippany is obligated to permit by court order. The township needing to be competitive in the marketplace and the surrounding towns do offer, did offer that developer some incentives. But while we move forward with this, we need to ensure that the schools are funded properly and the mayor has said he plans on speaking with them and discussing their needs as well. I think that's important. As a former Board of Education member, I know the importance of education and, you know, I support the mayor in speaking to the school board and doing what he can to assist them because I think that's necessary. I understand the school's point of view, but the reality is if we don't do something and these facilities go dark, everyone's going to suffer, not just the schools and the town, but everyone will. And I don't really, I don't want to see that happen. I want to see some type of meeting be met where we can benefit everyone and I think that's going to happen. I fully believe that's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say one thing really quickly, and I agree with what the mayor had said before, we all do care about the town. We might have different ideas and different solutions about what fits those needs and sometimes we might disagree strongly, but we all do care about the town deeply. And I think with what we've heard tonight, we shouldn't reflexively enter into any agreements right now without having heard all of the facts. We've heard two real estate agents that live in town, that have businesses, that understand the market, that have given us a completely different opinion. And I'm not saying that pilots are absolutely known in all circumstances, in all cases, but I think what we have here is a situation that this process could have been handled a lot better, where we should have started out with the information upfront, with the financials provided to the public. It had been mentioned before, the financials are still not on our website, so how can anybody really make an opinion without having all the facts and figures? And I think with a new council that's coming in, we shouldn't bind those future council members to very long-term commitments that they might have disagreements with. So I would suggest that we table these pilots for now, wait for a new council to come in, and we'll take that time to scrutinize the facts, to investigate, we'll have as many presentations, whether pro or con pilot. And my feeling right now is the public is not buying what the developers are selling to us and it's for those reasons I think we should table all of them.
We have introduction of ordinances, Mr. Karifi.
Ordinance 2023, colon 30, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter 420, order to increase water rates and charges, be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council. The Township of Parsippany Troy Hills held on November 21st, 2023, and the said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 19th, 2023 at 7:00 PM, prevailing time or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building. And said township at time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution by myself.
Second, Frank Neglia.
Roll call, Karifi.
Yes.
G. Piero.
Yes.
Musella.
Yes.
Neglia.
Yes.
Brignani.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023, colon 31, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey... Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 329, Section 17, Sewer Rental Fees of the Code of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on the first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, held on November 21, 2023. And that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 19, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time or soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township. At which time, all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution made by myself.
Second.
Roll call Karifi?
Yes.
Di Piero?
Yes.
Nella?
Yes.
Neglia?
Yes.
Brignani?
Yes.
I got 2023:32.
Yes.
That's where we're at. Ordinance 2023:32, ordinance authorizing special emergency appropriation amount of $1,202,593.74 for attainment of contractual requirements, severance, liabilities resulting from the retirement of termination of employees in and by the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, and the County of Morris, New Jersey. Be resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting at the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, held on November 21, 2023. And that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 19, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached. At the municipal building in said township. At which time, all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution by myself. Second.
Roll call Karifi?
Yes.
Di Piero?
Yes.
Nella?
Yes.
Neglia?
Yes.
Brignani?
Yes. Yes.
I got 2023:32.
Yes.
That's where we're at. Ordinance 2023:32, ordinance authorizing a special assessment for specific township properties to be remediated under the New Jersey Lead Pipe Abatement Law. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, held on November 21, 2023. And that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 19, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township. At which time, all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution by myself. Second. Neglia.
Roll call Karifi?
Yes.
Di Piero?
Yes.
Nella?
Yes.
Neglia?
Yes.
Brignani?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Ordinance 2023:35, an ordinance amending Chapter 405, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 14, Parking Prohibited at All Times of Certain Streets of the Code of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, held on November 21, 2023. And that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 19, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township. At which time, all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution by myself.
Second.
Roll call Karifi?
Yes.
Di Piero?
Yes.
Nella?
Yes.
Neglia?
Yes.
Brignani?
Yes. 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 Pardon me?
[inaudible]
Okay.
[inaudible] My name is Christine Winter. I am the...
Can you hear you?
Hello? Can you hear me now? Um, my name is Christine Winter. I am the planner for Parsippany's planning board. pools, water slides, food service, retail sales of health and fitness-related products, spa treatments, salons, childcare, nutritional centers, saunas, steam rooms, locker rooms, and sports courts. So there are two proposed end users, which is a little different than some of the previous redevelopment plans that the council has adopted. One of the end users is Lifetime Fitness, which I believe will be making their presentation shortly. We've also provided a conceptual plan. To make it clear, this is a concept plan. This is not necessarily exactly what will be built. It is a potential layout and... But it gives you, you know, possibilities for the site. So our... The bulk standards were designed to help effectuate something similar to this. A couple of points to note is that, in most cases, we've actually made the bulk requirements stricter than what currently exists in the ROL district. Because of site constraints, there's a creek in the front and wetlands transition areas in the rear, as well as a recreation easement. There are increased rear and front yard setbacks for the tract as a whole. The maximum impervious coverage has been reduced, and building coverage will remain the same. We've also increased the minimum lot size. Under the current zoning, the lot could potentially be divided into three conforming lots with three separate uses. So for the redevelopment plan for seven-way, it is consistent with most recent master plan in 2020, which identifies this area and those around it for future land uses as corporate office manufacturing. It does encourage retaining these property primary uses, but it allows for a range of supporting and complementary uses such as indoor recreation and entertainment, fitness, and multifamily, similar to what's proposed as part of this redevelopment plan. Further, the master plan encourages redevelopment and infill development of existing commercial and office areas that are vacant or in need of reinvestment. As mentioned before, the multifamily component of this plan will be part of the township's affordable housing obligation and replace, I believe it's the Route 46 Kmart project that was part of the township's fair... Share agreement and has since fallen through. So these units that are proposed will be replacing that particular project and help the township meet their requirements. That's the grand overview. Happy answering questions the council may have.
Council, have any questions?
Yes. So both parcels are receiving pilots for both separate projects, correct?
That is a separate issue. This is just the plan.
Okay, you can't answer any questions about that?
I am not involved in the pilot process.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
How many affordable units are in the... It's 238?
It is... It permits up to a total of 280 units. There is a 20% set aside of either units or credits.
So 46 affordable units there. Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
Thank you, Ms. Winter.
You're welcome.
I believe we have a... Mr. Inglisino, I think, come forward.
Thank you, Madam Council President. John Inglisino here on behalf of the owner. Really excited to present Lifetime Fitness. Somebody may be familiar with Lifetime Fitness. It's a sort of top of the... Top of the industry sort of facility. And we have Gene Rotman, who's a development manager for Lifetime Fitness, who's going to be here to make a brief presentation to familiarize you with and the community with Lifetime Fitness and what they do. And then we have Ashley Sikora, also of Lifetime Fitness, and she's the area director of New Jersey and Pennsylvania with some additional community-related information that I think the council will be excited to hear.
Thank you.
Gene?
We have a... We have a handout.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's not enough of these for the public. Could I loan this out to the public if I promised... They promised to give it back?
We got a couple here.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission, and city staff. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Gene Rotman, and I am a development manager with Lifetime. We are excited at this opportunity for a new club destination in Parsippany, New Jersey, and would like to share with you who Lifetime is. Lifetime was established in the early 90s by our current CEO and founder, just outside of Minneapolis, Minnesota. At the time, the fitness industry was based on selling as many memberships as possible with little regard for the member experience. We chose to set ourselves apart by putting the focus back on the member and maximizing the member's experience each and every time they visited our club. Over the years, we have evolved our business into more of a comprehensive health and wellness company that focuses on healthy programs, services, and events that encompass the entire spectrum of daily life, from everyone, from young families to busy professionals and senior members. Our focus is on providing luxury amenities under one roof, and that has allowed us to grow into a company that currently operates over 170 destinations across the United States. We currently have seven Lifetime athletic destinations in New Jersey and are excited to announce our opening of a club and Lifetime work in Middletown, New Jersey next year. We're particularly excited to bring a new location to Parsippany because of the demographic and the lifestyle exhibited by this community truly exemplifies the vision of our healthy way of life. The overall vision for Lifetime is to help communities and individuals achieve their health and athletic aspirations by engaging them in activities they love. We seek to accomplish this by providing the best place, the best people, and the best programs that we hope change lives positively every day. In respect to being the best place, we're much more than what you would imagine as a typical health club or gym, and we often describe our club as more of a resort-style destination, similar to a country club without the golf course, as you can see in the images provided. We've designed and built an athletic resort destination that our members want to come, not feel like they have to. For us, that starts with high-quality materials on the exterior and front entrances, such as brick, stone, and glass. As you make your way through our club, we'll continue to see the high-quality materials, such as granite countertops, Italian stone, and custom millwork. These images you see here show just a few of the amenities that we offer to our members, such as our full-service salon and spa and locker rooms. Also important to note, we marry up our programming by hiring and educating the best people and top-notch group fitness instructors, personal trainers, and nutritionists in the industry who are both passionate about health and wellness, as well as helping our members achieve their healthy way of life goals. At this club, we would anticipate hiring over 200 employees from the Parsippany and neighborhooding communities. Our programs and amenities include group fitness classes, Pilates, yoga, cycle, kids' care and programming, life clinic, a full-service cafe, recovery practices, and of course, your traditional weightlifting and cardio equipment. What's important to note is regardless of where you are on your health and fitness journey, we have the programming available to meet your needs. Another integral part of our business is the Lifetime Foundation. The Foundation champions initiatives that empower people to live happy, healthy lives on a healthy planet. Through financial grants and direct action, the support mission-driven organization and programs across the country promote youth nutrition, youth movement, and a healthy planet for all. Lifetime's foundation's reach is nationwide, including communities in New Jersey. For example, Bridgeton School District has recently engaged the Foundation to access an online tool for school nutrition professionals and purchasing cooperatives to analyze their products for ingredients and select alternatives, eliminating unwanted ingredients. Lifetime also hosts over 30 events nationwide, providing a premium experience designed to highlight and fulfill training goals at every level, open to everyone in the public. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ashley to share.
Hello. Thank you for having us here today. My name's Ashley Sikora. I started with Lifetime 14 and 1/2 years ago as a personal trainer, now the area director of New Jersey and Pennsylvania. Since that time, I've built my career, got married, had three amazing boys, purchased homes, and I get to work in a place that my whole family can be a part of. And there's not many people who can say that they work in a place that their family's always welcome in. And now... And now I get to employ over 2,000 individuals between two states who trust Lifetime and me to do the same for them, no matter what their stage of life is. Lifetime's mission is to empower everyone to live a happy and healthy life, and we do that in many ways. I'm going to share some of those ways with you. Brahm, our CEO and founder, shared with us many years ago about his vision to reduce the amount of times families leave their homes every day. So he's created programming that can be a one-stop shop for not only our families, but for individuals that come in. So that's through our kids' programs, like swim lessons, dance, yoga, agility and fitness, arts, sports, gymnastics, martial arts, et cetera, places where you can drop your kids off for a parents' night out, go out to dinner with your spouse or significant other or friend. And you can do all of these things, or your kids can do all of these things while you get to work out or get a service in the spa, meet with friends, take a class, play pickleball, swim laps, use our hot tub or cold plunge, take your stretch session or a dynamic personal training session, and enjoy your time. And then get a healthy meal with your family in the Life Cafe and get to head home and go to bed for the night. Shower if you want to at Lifetime before you even have to think about it at home. We build programs for people 90 days to 90-plus years old. We have Aurora Programming, which is some of our newest programming that we launched after COVID, which is an active aging program built for our active aging population. We have coffee club, organized games, aqua fitness, strength classes, pickleball, and more, all catered towards those individuals. We give back to our community. We do Ride of Lifetime every year, which is a cycle-based program where we raise money for the Children's Miracle Network and local specialized hospitals with the Children's Miracle Network, the Lifetime Foundation. New Jersey alone raised $200,000 last April, a little bit over. We donate supplies to animal shelters once we're done with them or have no use for them. Many team members live in our community. They sit on boards and they give back to our communities regularly. We partner with our first responders. We often rely on them, and we want to make sure that we are there for them, too. We participate in and donate to town events, tricky trays. We create a safe space for kids after school, and we open our doors to residents during power outages or storms, looking for a shelter, a shower, or a place to charge much-needed equipment. Just to name a few. So I'm really excited. Lifetime has built our destinations to be a place for everyone to serve our communities, and I know Lifetime would do just that in Parsippany. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions among the council?
Yeah. Now, first and foremost, we welcome you to Parsippany. We want you to come to Parsippany, but why should you guys receive a pilot?
I'm not a part of that discussion.
So who should I ask about why we're giving a pilot to a gym?
So I think that this is a discussion about the redevelopment plan. There will be a public hearing on the financial agreement on...
December 5.
December 5. And that will be... And that traditionally is where the financial presentation will be made, and those issues will be discussed. This isn't that.
Well, I know, but I mean...
But this is a... This is a public hearing on a redevelopment plan. This has nothing to do with the financial agreement.
But this project, Lifetime Fitness, will remove the financials from the equation. They will receive a pilot for this project, correct?
Technically, that's not the structure. That's not the structure. So technically, the answer is no. But yes, a pilot is envisioned and needed for the project to move forward. But again, I mean, that's not tonight's discussion.
No, I know, but I think we're talking... We can talk about the theory of this because we have other gyms in town that, you know, Retro Fitness, Blink, Crunch, LA Fitness, Orange Theory, NV Sports. When I go to CrossFit tomorrow, my own gym, and they hear, "Well, we're going to be giving a, you know, some special tax incentive to Lifetime Fitness. What about us?" What do I say to those people?
I don't think you can compare Retro Fitness or Blink with Lifetime Fitness. I think those are...
But at the end of the day, a gym is a gym. This is what we're talking about.
Listen, this is not a pilot conversation. This is a redevelopment plan. This is a public hearing for a redevelopment plan. This is not a pilot conversation. That conversation will come on December 5. It's not tonight.
Thank you.
Counsel President, I just want to... Ashley, when we met a while ago, you had mentioned that you were founded in 1990. There hasn't been one store or one operation that's closed since you opened. Is that correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thanks.
In 1990, all of our office buildings were also full, so...
Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to continue, Mr. Mazzella, with the ordinance 2023:22, please?
Yes. Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2023:22. Oh, sorry. You can come. Yeah.
I thought they were...
No, you're good. Yep.
Okay. So I guess...
I think we have to officially open...
I've looked through this handout.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
I'm paying attention.
Make a motion to open the hearing to the public.
Roll call, Karifi, DePiero.
Yes.
Mazzella.
Yes.
Neglia.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Okay, now you go ahead.
I think the public hearing is the December 19th, not the 5th. I think I said the 5th.
Okay. Most of this meeting has been spent talking about public concern about the pilots, and a lot of people have left after that session. However, this clearly, based on what I heard during those earlier talks, is leading to a pilot, not only for this recreation place, but for 284 apartments. And yet, there's no mention at all of apartments in this brochure. It's a fancy gym. So I would respectfully say that you guys should not pass this at this point in time. Put a hold on more pilots until things settle down. There's too many questions and concerns in town about how many pilots you're about to approve. And yes, we... This technically is not approving a pilot, but it's been made abundantly clear that's where we're going with this type of ordinance. Thank you. I hope you respond to my comments.
Well, I mean, I've been on crystal clear. We should table all of the pilots until a new council takes a...
Hank Keller, Ten Fennwood Place, Parsippany.
Well, I got done, and now I'm hoping somebody else will respond, but I'm sorry. I'll wait until somebody else responds.
If I'm correct, this ordinance is just for the redevelopment plan.
That's correct.
It has nothing to do with any of the other stuffs.
Well, it can. It's not a requirement. I understand that that's what is going to be sought at this December 19 hearing, but they are two separate things.
Hank Keller, Ten Fennwood Place. I just want to say that I know you've had your procedures for a very long time, but it's very clear to me, and I hope it's becoming clear to each of you, that the process that we're using is absolutely unacceptable, okay? How can we possibly be passing... How can our elected officials be passing a proposal of something, of some limited thing, without knowing what the financial implications are to your constituents? I find that I am shocked, and I'm really feeling very, very uncomfortable. And I've never come and spoken harshly before to this chamber, and I'm just telling you, I think that if this is what's been accepted in the past, I think that you really should rethink what it is, how you're going about taking on complicated processes, because this is not acceptable. And thank you very much.
Thanks.
John Inglisino, I want to respond to this. Under the New Jersey Redevelopment and Housing Law, you don't have any power to enter into redevelopment agreements or pilots until a redevelopment plan is passed, okay? This is the process that is set forth by the New Jersey State Legislature in the New Jersey Redevelopment and Housing Law. And this council has followed this process for most of the year 2023, starting with an area in need of redevelopment study... Or I'm sorry, a resolution directing the planning board to conduct this study. The planning board conducted the Blight Study on public notice, had a public hearing on the Blight Study, okay? The redevelopment plan was introduced by ordinance. It was sent to the planning board, who had a public meeting on the redevelopment plan, which was deemed to be consistent with the master plan. This is the process that the New Jersey State Legislature has required you to follow. This is not a process that is unique to Parsippany. You don't have the power to do anything to effectuate redevelopment until a redevelopment plan is adopted. So this notion that you can do everything at once, that would be against the law. That would be against the law. So I just, from my perspective, as an expert in this area of law, I'm here to say that, you know, that discussions about how you're not following a procedure are incorrect. You are following the exact procedure that the law requires you to follow.
Thank you. This is a public session, and he keeps coming back up. Can I ask him to speak again? You've already had your five minutes. I'm sorry. But he's the attorney.
For who?
No, sir. He is the attorney for this project.
Can I close, please?
We have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Make a motion. Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DePiero.
Yes.
Mazzella.
Yes.
Neglia.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Okay, now you go ahead.
I think the public hearing is the December 19th, not the 5th. I think I said the 5th.
Okay. Most of this meeting has been spent talking about public concern about the pilots, and a lot of people have left after that session. However, this clearly, based on what I heard during those earlier talks, is leading to a pilot, not only for this recreation place, but for 284 apartments. And yet, there's no mention at all of apartments in this brochure. It's a fancy gym. So I would respectfully say that you guys should not pass this at this point in time. Put a hold on more pilots until things settle down. There's too many questions and concerns in town about how many pilots you're about to approve. And yes, we... This technically is not approving a pilot, but it's been made abundantly clear that's where we're going with this type of ordinance. Thank you. I hope you respond to my comments.
Well, I mean, I've been on crystal clear. We should table all of the pilots until a new council takes a...
Hank Keller, Ten Fennwood Place, Parsippany.
Well, I got done, and now I'm hoping somebody else will respond, but I'm sorry. I'll wait until somebody else responds.
If I'm correct, this ordinance is just for the redevelopment plan.
That's correct.
It has nothing to do with any of the other stuffs.
Well, it can. It's not a requirement. I understand that that's what is going to be sought at this December 19 hearing, but they are two separate things.
Hank Keller, Ten Fennwood Place. I just want to say that I know you've had your procedures for a very long time, but it's very clear to me, and I hope it's becoming clear to each of you, that the process that we're using is absolutely unacceptable, okay? How can we possibly be passing... How can our elected officials be passing a proposal of something, of some limited thing, without knowing what the financial implications are to your constituents? I find that I am shocked, and I'm really feeling very, very uncomfortable. And I've never come and spoken harshly before to this chamber, and I'm just telling you, I think that if this is what's been accepted in the past, I think that you really should rethink what it is, how you're going about taking on complicated processes, because this is not acceptable. And thank you very much.
John Inglisino, I want to respond to this. Under the New Jersey Redevelopment and Housing Law, you don't have any power to enter into redevelopment agreements or pilots until a redevelopment plan is passed, okay? This is the process that is set forth by the New Jersey State Legislature in the New Jersey Redevelopment and Housing Law. And this council has followed this process for most of the year 2023, starting with an area in need of redevelopment study... Or I'm sorry, a resolution directing the planning board to conduct this study. The planning board conducted the Blight Study on public notice, had a public hearing on the Blight Study, okay? The redevelopment plan was introduced by ordinance. It was sent to the planning board, who had a public meeting on the redevelopment plan, which was deemed to be consistent with the master plan. This is the process that the New Jersey State Legislature has required you to follow. This is not a process that is unique to Parsippany. You don't have the power to do anything to effectuate redevelopment until a redevelopment plan is adopted. So this notion that you can do everything at once, that would be against the law. That would be against the law. So I just, from my perspective, as an expert in this area of law, I'm here to say that, you know, that discussions about how you're not following a procedure are incorrect. You are following the exact procedure that the law requires you to follow.
Thank you.
Since this is a public session, and he keeps coming back up, can I ask him to speak again?
You've already had your five minutes. I'm sorry. But he's the attorney.
For who?
No, sir. He is the attorney for this project.
Can I close, please?
We have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Make a motion. Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DePiero.
Yes.
Mazzella.
Yes.
Neglia.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2023:22.
Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DePiero.
Yes.
Mazzella.
Yes.
Neglia.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, now you go ahead.
I think the public hearing is the December 19th, not the 5th. I think I said the 5th.
Okay. Most of this meeting has been spent talking about public concern about the pilots, and a lot of people have left after that session. However, this clearly, based on what I heard during those earlier talks, is leading to a pilot, not only for this recreation place, but for 284 apartments. And yet, there's no mention at all of apartments in this brochure. It's a fancy gym. So I would respectfully say that you guys should not pass this at this point in time. Put a hold on more pilots until things settle down. There's too many questions and concerns in town about how many pilots you're about to approve. And yes, we... This technically is not approving a pilot, but it's been made abundantly clear that's where we're going with this type of ordinance. Thank you. I hope you respond to my comments.
Well, I mean, I've been on crystal clear. We should table all of the pilots until a new council takes a...
Hank Keller, Ten Fennwood Place, Parsippany.
Well, I got done, and now I'm hoping somebody else will respond, but I'm sorry. I'll wait until somebody else responds.
If I'm correct, this ordinance is just for the redevelopment plan.
That's correct.
It has nothing to do with any of the other stuffs.
Well, it can. It's not a requirement.
My name is Jean Rotman, and I am a development manager with Lifetime. We are excited at this opportunity for a new club destination in Parsippany, New Jersey, and would like to share with you who Lifetime is. Lifetime was established in the early 90s by our current CEO and founder, just outside of Minneapolis, Minnesota. At the time, the fitness industry was based on selling as many memberships as possible with little regard for the member experience. We chose to set ourselves apart by putting the focus back on the member and maximizing the member's experience each and every time they visited our club. Over the years, we have evolved our business into more of a comprehensive health and wellness company that focuses on healthy programs, services, and events that encompass the entire spectrum of daily life, from everyone, from young families to busy professionals and senior members. Our focus is on providing luxury amenities under one roof, and that has allowed us to grow into a company that currently operates over 170 destinations across the United States. We currently have seven Lifetime athletic destinations in New Jersey and are excited to announce our opening of a club and Lifetime work in Middletown, New Jersey next year. We're particularly excited to bring a new location to Parsippany because of the demographic and the lifestyle exhibited by this community truly exemplifies the vision of our healthy way of life company. The overall vision for Lifetime is to help communities and individuals achieve their health and athletic aspirations by engaging them in activities they love. We seek to accomplish this by providing the best place, the best people, and the best programs that we hope change lives positively every day. In respect to being the best place, we're much more than what you would imagine as a typical health club or gym, and we often described our club as more of a resort-style destination, similar to a country club without the golf course, as you can see in the images provided. We've designed and built an athletic resort destination that our members want to come, not feel like they have to. For us, that starts with high-quality materials on the exterior and front entrances, such as brick, stone, and glass. As you make your way through our club, we'll continue to see the high-quality materials, such as granite countertops, Italian stone, and custom millwork. These images you see here show just a few of the amenities that we offer to our members, such as our full-service salon and spa and locker rooms. Also important to note, we marry up our programming by hiring and educating the best people and top-notch group fitness instructors, personal trainers, and nutritionists in the industry, who are both passionate about health and wellness, as well as helping our members achieve their healthy way of life goals. At this club, we would anticipate hiring over 200 employees from the Parsippany and neighboring communities. Our programs and amenities include group fitness classes, Pilates, yoga, cycle, kids' care and programming, Life Clinic, a full-service cafe, recovery practices, and of course, your traditional weightlifting and cardio equipment. What's important to note is regardless of where you are on your health and fitness journey, we have the programming available to meet your needs. Another integral part of our business is the Lifetime Foundation. The Foundation champions initiatives that empower people to live healthy, healthy lives on a healthy planet. Through financial grants and direct action, the support mission-driven organization and programs across the country promote youth nutrition, youth movement, and a healthy planet for all. Lifetime's foundation's reach is nationwide, including communities in New Jersey. For example, Bridgeton School District has recently engaged the Foundation to access an online tool for school nutrition professionals and purchasing cooperatives to analyze their products for ingredients and select alternatives, eliminating unwanted ingredients. Lifetime also hosts over 30 events nationwide, providing a premium experience designed to highlight and fulfill training goals at every level, open to everyone in the public. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ashley to share.
Hello. Thank you for having us here today. My name's Ashley Sikora. I started with Lifetime 14 and a half years ago as a personal trainer, now the area director of New Jersey and Pennsylvania. Since that time, I've built my career, got married, had three amazing boys, purchased homes, and I get to work in a place that my whole family can be a part of. And there's not many people who can say that they work in a place that their family's always welcome in. And now I get to employ over 2,000 individuals between two states who trust Lifetime and me to do the same for them, no matter what their stage of life is. Lifetime's mission is to empower everyone to live a happy and healthy life, and we do that in many ways. I'm going to share some of those ways with you. Brahm, our CEO and founder, shared with us many years ago about his vision to reduce the amount of times families leave their homes every day. So he's created programming that can be a one-stop shop for not only our families, but for individuals that come in. So that's through our kids' programs, like swim lessons, dance, yoga, agility and fitness, arts, sports, gymnastics, martial arts, et cetera, places where you can drop your kids' off for a parent's night out, go out to dinner with your spouse or significant other or friend. And you can do all of these things, or your kids can do all of these things, while you get to work out or get a service in the spa, meet with friends, take a class, play pickleball, swim laps, use our hot tub or close plunge, take your stretch session or dynamic personal training session, and enjoy your time, and then get a healthy meal with your family in the Life Cafe and get to head home and go to bed for the night. Shower if you want to at Lifetime before you even have to think about it at home. We build programs for people 90 days to 90-plus years old. We have Aurora programming, which is some of our newest programming that we launched after COVID, which is an active aging program built for our active aging population. We have coffee club, organized games, aqua fitness, strength classes, pickleball, and more, all catered towards those individuals. We give back to our community. We do Ride of Lifetime every year, which is a cycle-based program where we raise money for the Children's Miracle Network and local specialized hospitals with the Children's Miracle Network, the Lifetime Foundation. New Jersey alone raised $200,000 last April, a little bit over. We donate supplies to animal shelters once we're done with them or have no use for them. Many team members live in our community, they sit on boards, and they give back to our communities regularly. We partner with our first responders. We often rely on them, and we want to make sure that we are there for them, too. We participate in and donate to town events, tricky trays. We create a safe space for kids after school, and we open our doors to residents during power outages or storms, looking for a shelter, a shower, or a place to charge much-needed equipment. It's just to name a few. So I'm really excited. Lifetime has built our destinations to be a place for everyone, to serve our communities, and I know Lifetime would do just that in Parsippany. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions among the council?
Yeah. First and foremost, we welcome you to Parsippany. We want you to come to Parsippany, but why should you guys receive a pilot?
I'm not a part of that discussion.
So who should I ask about why we're giving a pilot to a gym?
So I think that this is a discussion about the redevelopment plan. There will be a public hearing on the financial agreement on...
December 5th.
December 5th. And that will be, and that traditionally is, where the financial presentation will be made, and those issues will be discussed. This isn't that.
Well, I know, but I mean...
But this is a public hearing on a redevelopment plan. This has nothing to do with the financial agreement.
But this project, Lifetime Fitness, will move the financials from the equation. They will receive a pilot for this project, correct?
Technically, that's not the structure. That's not the structure, so technically, the answer is no. But yes, a pilot is envisioned and needed for the project to move forward. But again, I mean, that's not tonight's discussion.
No, I know, but I think we're talking, we can talk about the theory of this because we have other gyms in town that, you know, Retro Fitness, Blink, Crunch, LA Fitness, Orange Theory, Envy Sports. When I go to CrossFit tomorrow, my own gym, and they hear, "Well, we're going to be giving a, you know, some special tax incentive to Lifetime Fitness. What about us?" What do I say to those people?
I don't think you can compare Retro Fitness or Blink with Lifetime Fitness.
But at the end of the day, a gym is a gym. This is what we're talking about.
Listen, this is not a pilot conversation. This is a redevelopment plan. This is a public hearing for a redevelopment plan. This is not a pilot conversation. That conversation will come on December 5th. It's not tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel President, I just want to, Ashley, when we met a while ago, you had mentioned that you were founded in 1990. There hasn't been one store or one operation that's closed since you opened. Is that correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thanks.
In 1990, all of our office buildings were also full, so...
Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to continue, Mr. Musella, with the ordinance 2023-22, please?
Yes. Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2023:20... Oh, sorry. You can come. Yeah. No, you're good. Yep.
Okay, so I guess I've looked through this handout.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing. Make a motion to open the hearing to the public.
Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
Okay, now you can go ahead.
I think the public hearing is December 19th, not the 5th. I think I said the 5th.
Okay. Most of this meeting has been spent talking about public concern about the pilots, and a lot of people have left after that session. However, this clearly, based on what I heard during those earlier talks, is leading to a pilot, not only for this recreation place, but for 284 apartments. And yet, there's no mention at all of apartments in this brochure. It's a fancy gym. So I would respectfully say that you guys should not pass this at this point in time. Put a hold on more pilots until things settle down. There's too many questions and concerns in town about how many pilots you're about to approve. And yes, this technically is not approving a pilot, but it's been made abundantly clear that's where we're going with this type of ordinance. Thank you. I hope you respond to my comments.
Well, I mean, I've been on crystal clear. We should table all of the pilots until a new council takes a...
Hank Keller, 10-10 with place in Parsippany.
Well, I've got none. Now I'm hoping somebody else will respond, but I'm sorry. If I'm correct, this ordinance is just for the redevelopment plan.
That's correct.
It has nothing to do with any of the other stuff.
Well, it can. It's not a requirement. I understand that that's what is going to be sought at this December 19th hearing, but they are two separate things.
Hank Keller, 10-10 with place. I just want to say that I know you've had your procedures for a very long time, but it's very clear to me, and I hope it's becoming clear to each of you, that the process that we're using is absolutely unacceptable, okay? How can we possibly be passing, how can our elected officials be passing a proposal of something, of some limited thing, without knowing what the financial implications are to your constituents? I find that, I am shocked, and I'm really feeling very, very uncomfortable. And I've never come and spoken harshly before to this chamber, and I'm just telling you, I think that if this is what's been accepted in the past, I think that you really should rethink what it is, how you're going about taking on complicated processes, because this is not acceptable. And thank you very much.
Johnny Lucino, I want to respond to this. Under the New Jersey Redevelopment and Housing Law, you don't have any power to enter into redevelopment agreements or pilots until a redevelopment plan is passed, okay? This is the process that is set forth by the New Jersey State Legislature in the New Jersey Redevelopment and Housing Law. And this council has followed this process for most of the year 2023, starting with an area Native redevelopment study, or I'm sorry, a resolution directing the planning board to conduct this study. The planning board conducted the Blight Study on public notice, had a public hearing on the Blight Study, okay? The redevelopment plan was introduced by ordinance. It was sent to the planning board, who had a public meeting on the redevelopment plan, which was deemed to be consistent with the master plan. This is the process that the New Jersey State Legislature has required you to follow. This is not a process that is unique to Parsippany. You don't have the power to do anything to effectuate redevelopment until a redevelopment plan is adopted. So this notion that you can do everything at once, that would be against the law. That would be against the law. So I just, from my perspective, as an expert in this area of law, I'm here to say that, you know, that discussions about how you're not following a procedure are incorrect. You are following the exact procedure that the law requires you to follow.
Thank you.
Since this is a public session, and he keeps coming back up, can I ask him to speak again?
You've already had your five minutes. I'm sorry. But he is the attorney.
For who, you?
No, sir. He is the attorney for this project.
I close, but...
We have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Make a motion. Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading in a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2023:2022.
Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023:24, ordinance of Township Council of the Township of Persippany Troy Hills County, Morris, State of New Jersey, amending the supplemental chapter 296 entitled peddling and soliciting to amend the hours such activities shall be permitted. The notice of ordinance 2023:24 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Persippany Troy Hills on October 23rd, 2023, and introduced at the October 17th, 2023 regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2023:24 be heard in their second and final reading by title only by myself.
Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
Motion to open the public hearing in ordinance 2023:24 by myself. Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
Seeing no one come forward, motion to close public hearing over ordinance 2023:24 by myself. Second.
Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading in the hearing held hereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2023:24 by myself. Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023:25, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Persippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter 83, section 4, regulations of licenses of the code of the Township of Persippany Troy Hills. The notice for ordinance 2023:25 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Persippany Troy Hills on October 23rd, 2023, and introduced at the October 17th, 2023 regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2023:25 be heard in their second and final reading by title only by myself.
Second. Neglia.
Roll call, Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2023:25 by myself.
Second. Neglia.
Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
Seeing no one come forward, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Neglia.
Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading in a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2023:25 by myself.
Second. Neglia.
Roll call, Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
Non-consent agenda resolution, resolution 2023-172, authorizing a shared courts agreement with the Town of Boot, and motion to approve the resolution by myself. Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
R2023-173, designating Canzo Persippany Urban Renewal LLC as redeveloper of the property known as Block 202, Lot 1.9, in the township of Persippany Troy Hills, and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with Canzo Persippany Urban Renewal LLC for the redevelopment of the north parcel of said property for the construction of up to 280 units of inclusionary housing in accordance with the redevelopment plan. Motion to approve the resolution made by myself.
Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
R2023/174, designating Sig Silven Club Urban Renewal LLC as redeveloper of the property known as Block 202, Lot 1.9, in the township of Persippany Troy Hills, and authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement with Sig Silven Club Urban Renewal LLC for the redevelopment of the south parcel of said property for the construction of luxury health and fitness center in accordance with the redevelopment plan. Motion to approve the resolution by myself. Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
R2023-175, authorizing agreements with the Persippany Troy Hills Police Benevolent Association, Local 131, and the Superior Office Association, laws to wages, benefits, and working conditions. Motion to approve the resolution above by myself.
Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
I'd like to thank the council for passing this. And I want to thank the PBA and the SOA for a hard-fought negotiation, but, you know, I'm very pro-police, always have been, and our men and women in town, they keep us safe and protected, and we have some great plans ahead. We're going to be hiring five more police officers very shortly, and we're going to get our numbers back up, and that's why a lot of what was discussed here tonight is very important. Our ratables go up, and we collect revenue, because when we don't do those types of things, we can't hire, we can't, you know, certain things. But I want to thank the council for passing this tonight.
Resolution 2023-176, authorizing the 2024 holiday schedule for the township of Persippany Troy Hills. Motion to approve resolution by myself. Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
R2023-177, authorizing the designation of the position of purchasing agent. Motion to approve the resolution above by myself.
Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
R2023-178, award of a contract to NW Financial Group LLC as financial advisor. Motion to approve the resolution above by myself. Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
Consent agenda. Be it resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are routine and non-controversial by the Township Council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda by myself.
Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
Approval payroll and bills list. CFO Leonard Ho recommends authorization of payment, authorized payment of the November 22nd, 2023, regular miscellaneous payroll estimated at $1,650,000. Payment of bills for voucher list 11/22/23 through 11/17/23 is $3,717,532.27. Motion to approve the authorization of payment by myself. Second.
Roll call, Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
In the ultimate...
No, before we adjourn, I just have one item I'd like to bring up, question. I saw on Facebook, there's a no U-turn sign now on Route 46 and North Bevick Road. You can't make that U-turn anymore. And my question is, the Department of Transportation put that sign up, but did the township approve it? Did the township pass an ordinance to make it a law in Parsippany that the police can enforce?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Well, as my understanding, all full stops and traffic signs, all traffic items should be in ordinance so the police can cite it when they give a ticket.
Yeah, and I don't understand how they would have just put that up without notifying the township. That's odd.
Yeah, so no one in the town requested that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware.
So does that...
Counsel President, there may have been a discussion with the engineering department and their engineer, and I could look into that tomorrow.
And they would do that without telling the town?
I would hope not, but maybe it was a temporary measure.
Because if that requires an ordinance, I'm going to vote no. I'll tell you right now. That's the only way, how are people going to, if they want to go to Eklah or that Indian store, or a steak store, any place along there, they would have to go all the way down to the Holiday Inn to make a U-turn. That's ridiculous. Or make the left turn on North Bevick Road and cut through the neighborhoods. It's ridiculous.
Does that mean that the police, if they do see that occurring, are they permitted to give a ticket, or they are not?
I thought they would have to cite some ordinance.
Normally, you would for local, you know, obviously if it was a local road, but on the state road, I don't know that we have to do that. I'll check into that.
Okay, thank you.
State highway.
All right, now you can do the ultimate motion.
The ultimate motion.
Second.
Karifi, DiPiero, Musella, Neglia, Brignani.
Yes.
For three hours.
You're right.
Your first meeting is our longest meeting that we've had.
Yep, all the discussion.
You're going east on 46.
You know, it's pretty short.
Yeah, I'm all right. Actually, my wife is...